Welcome everyone to the Nishoba Regional Regular School Committee Meeting of June 20th, 2018. I think you all have heard, we have lots of guests in the audience. We're going to be able to move through the agenda, but there's some really juicy topics tonight, so settle in, school committee. Calling the meeting in order at 6:00. And our first item is citizens' comments. Do we have any folks who have any comments to make about items on the agenda? Okay. I've got a couple of updates.
I think we do.
Hi, so I think I know you.
I think you do.
Okay, but before you, let me just do my thing, just to keep, make sure nobody says I didn't do it. We have two policies. We want to make sure the comments have something to do with something on the agenda, and we will listen to your input. Okay. Tell us your name and your town.
I'm Pam Kane. I've been in Bolton for 20, almost 22 years, very happy Boltonite person. And I am here, I've never come to a school committee, so I'm a nervous rep. I have to be honest.
Don't be nervous.
I've had five children go through the school system, one is still there, and I'm very proud of our district, and I love our school system. I come this time for this meeting for, I printed it out, excuse me, the action list that we have here, the goals for the district. And I'm specifically focusing on goal number two, and I just want to talk about to foster safety and supportive learning, an environment that enables students to develop positive relationships in physical, mental, emotional, social well-being. And this year, we have a lot of, I'm coming here as a parent who has talked to other parents who have kids at the high school, concerned about the feel of the high school that is different this year. And we just want to go on record as letting the school committee know what the concerns are coming from students, and also as well as the parents. In particular, they feel that just the feeling is a little bit different. We do have new staff and all of that, so that could be part of it. The safety drills concern them, there's only been one where they used to have a lot more, they're not clear about them. And the changes in the staff, most recently, they've come home, and we, as parents, don't know, so that's why we came. There's a lot of teachers that are not returning next year, or some that they know of, and they just want some feedback. So we're just here looking for just a little bit of data, or we just want to ask and have it on record that this is how the kids feel.
And so your comments are sharing student reaction.
Student, and then the parents, we feel that we, in the past, had a really large amount of communication coming from prior Dr. Graham, we would get weekly phone calls and emails, and we don't have as many, and we understand people work differently and manage differently, but we don't feel that we have all the information to answer these questions for. Where Dr. Graham would express them in his weekly updates, at least a lot of times, but they were very important and pivotal in reassuring our kids that everything was under control. So those, that's really what we're talking about, is that, that communication.
So...
And the morale, that they feel that's just as different this year.
So I can't speak to the morale, and I'm probably going to get beat up after this, because I generally will just say thank you, because it's not a give and take, but I do think that it's important for you to share what you just did with us. I'm going to hand this over to the superintendent, because one thing I will tell you is that communication is a focus this year on the school committee.
That's why we're here.
But it's also going to be a, an advisory committee of the school committee as well, to look at mostly what we're doing, us, the school committees. We can't really cross over into the administration, but we can put, set up a structure and a strategy construct in order for that to impact what you're talking about, so...
That would be great.
Yeah. Thanks for your comments, I appreciate your approach, and I think that, well, yeah.
Can I speak to you?
Yep, sure.
Yeah, normally, we don't speak, to be honest with you, during this time, Chairman Ramoskis asked that, right, normally that's not what this is. But if I could, if I could just say to, to spring from her thinking, we are also in the midst of creating a new context for communication. We did a lot of work on that this year, this last, this past year, we brought a focus group together, we sent out the survey, and we've got those results now back. And we're in the midst of creating a new communication plan that's consistent district-wide, so that parents will know in all of the schools what they can expect from their principals. So we're just in the process of that. If I can also speak for one second about the drills, I don't know if you noticed, you may, well, not have known, I wouldn't expect that you did, but we did a drill training with the high school staff yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. And I was actually going to, I'll speak to that tonight, too, but in part, because we are putting such a focus on that, we put a huge focus on it this year and last year. Last year was more about pulling together a plan and trying to see where the holes were in the current plan, because, I mean, there's a plan in place already, right? It's just that we recognize that there are holes in it. So we worked really, really hard on that, and then now you'll see next year, like each of the schools, the communities have gone through some different drafts this year, and then we had the high school yesterday, and you'll see that that whole piece plays itself out for the month of September. We're also doing parent information meetings in each of the communities next September, so you'll see that come through to you as well, so whatever community. And we're doing it in a way so that it's Tuesday and Thursday, and one week and Wednesday on the other, so that, don't feel that if you're Bolton, you have to be in Bolton, if you want to go to Lancaster, wherever you've got, you know, the evening free, we want you to attend that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pam. Hi. You want to give us your, so you have another comment?
Well...
You don't want to piggyback on hers, go on to your other problem.
Piggyback for, in the sense of, we weren't getting the messages, I have a freshman that...
So hold on one second, tell us your, you know...
Melissa Whalen, sorry, Stowe.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a freshman that exactly, we have the same issues, but not knowing, but having a parent. But my point is, I have an upcoming eighth grader that special needs, who will be a freshman, he's nonverbal. So when we talk about getting the information out, it's really hard, we may be getting it out verbally, but if it's not in that email or that voicemail, I'm still not going to get that information.
Right.
So that's why it was very important this year, we did miss a few things that we didn't get because of that, for...
Okay, good to know, thank you, I'll make note of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, my pleasure, appreciate it. Any other, thank you both for your approach and your comments, we appreciate it. Is that Mrs. Romeo? Anyone else? No one?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Superintendent, no, mine, sorry. Quick updates, it's the last meeting of the school year, bear with me, it's been a crazy day. So, school committee, so your planning calendar, we have completed all of the things, this is ridiculous amount of work, but we've completed all the things that we said we would do next, this past year. Next year, you're not going to see, you're going to see some of the consistent important components on here, some of these may not be on here, and then we're going to augment as we need to, but just use this, a couple of things might shift and change from one month to next, but this is pretty much where we're going to be going, and this is our roadmap. So if there's something that's not on there, that has district-wide concern as a program, and it's not on there, let me know, and we'll talk about getting that on there, okay? The district improvement, okay, so last week, last Tuesday, the school committee met for four hours?
It seems like six hours, but it was probably only four.
And it was our annual, we call it goal setting, but this year it's kind of become a little bit more than that. We had the MAS-C come and do a roles and responsibilities workshop, which we do every year, because the school committee's role is specific, and the administration's role is specific, and there's a lot of times when we have a tendency to cross the line, because we want to help, or we want things to work well. So it was really helpful for us to have those discussions, and what's appropriate, and where do we move, and what's our role and our ownership. The other thing we did was we took a look at the district improvement plan, and I think, you know, when we get to that section of the agenda, we'll talk a little bit more about it. But I think what we heard around the table was, for this year, we think we're okay to continue the programs that were put in place, that were gaps that we have, but we will be looking at a strategy session, a district improvement multi-year strategy session. And Alita, thanks everyone for getting back to Alita with your dates that don't work, and it looks like it'll be the first half of August sometime, so I don't know exactly when that is, we'll figure it out, it will probably likely be in the same place. And this will be an opportunity for us to sit back after the rush of work that's gone on the past couple of years, thoughtfully, and think about, I think Elise says it really well, who is the Nishoba Regional School District graduate? Who is that individual all the way down? What are the characteristics that we want them to embody? What are, because it's beyond the academics, right? We all agreed on that. So, more to come on that, I want you to understand that the district improvement plan, as we move into this phase of true strategy, will not be a one and done, it won't be a one-month, two-month, three-month effort, this is going to be an intensive effort, a lot of thought is going to have to go into, a lot of discussion. I think we're going to be asking the superintendent and the administrative staff to come up with the educational outlook and vision, and then we're going to wrap around that, and we'll hold, we'll get the community involved, we'll figure out what the right way is to do that, I don't know if it's survey or if it's sessions, but we'll certainly get the community involved, so that we have input from all of our constituents. But that's where we're going to go this year, so be patient, it's not going to be like it's been in, you know, the past however many years, where it's, we're getting it done and we're moving forward. This is going to be thoughtful, who are we, what do we want to be on our way to the elusive path? We could get there, top 10. Okay. I think that's all I have, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clancy.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things here tonight, I've got five things on my list. First of all, congratulations to our graduating class 2018, I know Chairman Ramoskis and I were there the other day, and it was fabulous, it really, and what a great place to have it, I mean, it was just great. We want to thank the parents, the staff, the faculty leadership, especially Ross Corneille, who was their advisor, Jen Dontrumont, and Marcia Wozniak from Principal Dean DeMinocchio's office, who just does, does an amazing job with everything. And to our student leaders, I thought our student leaders were absolutely phenomenal this year, they really, I mean, they're always good, but this year they just did a really super, super job. The second item is school committee meeting broadcast, I just want to touch on that, I don't want to offer a lot of that tonight, because we're still kind of in discussions, and I know, I think they're still in a meeting right now. I've met several times during the last several months with Bolton's BatCo representatives, and the cable outlet representatives from Lancaster, Stow, and looking at the possibility of a different method and process for taking our school committee meetings. The town administrators have been very involved, all three town administrators have been very involved in this discussion with me, we've worked very collaboratively, the four of us. Several pieces of communication have been exchanged, and a follow-up meeting, like say, started this afternoon, I suspect the final one. We're really close to resolution on this, and I just want to thank our town administrators for their guidance and support throughout this process, their ideas and their many efforts and the many, many discussions we've had, so special thanks to them. School committee workshop, you've already alluded to, Alita, as always, thank you so much for all the work that you do to help get us there and keep us well organized, it was really, I felt, really, really rich discussion around the table. It was long, but I thought it was really, really rich, I thought it was very, very valuable, so I thoroughly enjoyed it. The safety exercise that I had alluded to earlier, you know, was interesting, Principal Dean DeMinocchio and I spoke that morning, and I said, well, tell me exactly what, because what I was looking for was a rally point, I wanted to see the rally point and how people were going to be aligned at the rally point, because we've had so much attention to the detail of all of these processes, it doesn't just happen quickly, you know, and you've got to have your buy-in from all of your, your local law enforcement, your fire department, the ambulance folks are there, everybody's there. And he said, well, I think as long as you're there around 8:25, 8:30, then you should be fine. So I started to go, I was close to getting there about 8:20, and they'd started a little bit early, which was fine, because, I mean, they were just crossing the road, but I have to tell you, it was an eerie feeling. It was a really eerie feeling, because all of the traffic had been stopped, right, on 117, and you've got all of these emergency vehicles there, and you see everybody walking across, and I immediately tweeted out, because I want people to know, hey, exercise is going on here, do not, you know, I didn't want people to think there was a real thing, but it was an eerie feeling. Flip side of it was, it was also very comforting when I stood there, as I watched with the megaphone, and, you know, Joe Lynch was there, of course, from the DPW, and kind of aligning and explaining in some details, certain things I'm not prepared to share right now, but, you know, everybody was there, our chief was there, our chiefs were there, everybody was there that should have been there, and it was a full-scale exercise. And just hats off, I mean, every school also has its own school safety committee, and then we have a district-wide emergency task force as well, and so all of those players come to this table. And so when you're doing something like that on a mass scale, you want to make sure every, every detail's been looked after, and I think everybody did a fabulous job. So I think our goal is that by the end of September, we don't have anybody saying, gee, I don't feel comfortable, or I don't feel confident, or I don't know what my options are. The goal is by the end of the September, everybody knows exactly what they can do, and the options that are available to them. So that's where we're heading with that, I know I said this before, but I say this again, particularly in light of the question tonight, the first two days back, when our staff comes back, the first day, there's an online training that all staff will be taking, and the second day, we will be running through what we call soft case scenarios, so that folks will have a chance to do soft case scenarios on the second day. And again, that will be with all of our key partners in all of our communities. So, again, that's quite a bit to organize right now, and make sure, but I think we're really ready to go, and so, I mean, so that everybody feels comfortable by the end of September. The only other thing I'd mention is tonight is our grade eight exercises, so I know we had our graduation for a grade twelve, but tonight is a really special night for our grade eights. And normally I drive, I'm on the 117 right now, driving between each of the communities, stopping in at all of them, so I'm going to miss that tonight, but I certainly, I know that we all wish them the very best as they leave their middle school and elementarys, and head into the big school of the high school. So special congratulations to all of our grades tonight. So that's it for me.
Terrific, thank you for that. Glenn, yes?
I know what you're talking about, but BatCo, BatCo is a, we're doing this, and all these negotiations are happening because there's a change in protocol with the, with the videos?
We're looking at a different way that will bring a certain amount of equity and ownership to each of the three communities, and it won't be just owned by one, one organization here, in terms of responsibilities, or the workload, or the, or any monies are attached to it, or anything like that. So all of that is being reviewed right now.
So is that a, is that a district issue that we need to solve, or is that a town issue that needs to be solved?
A little bit of both, I think, to be honest with you. What we're really aiming for is that the three districts, all...
Three towns.
Sorry, three towns, thank you, all the three towns, all play a part in this. And they're all different, because they're all linked differently to their communities, you know, like Stowe's underneath Stowe, this is a little bit different, that's a little bit different. So, you know, we've had meetings, they've all been at the table, so it's been very, from my perspective, it's been a very good process. So, yeah, and as I say, our town administrators, I, you know, I said to somebody the other day, our town administrators are amazing, like honestly, you know, and having worked in a number of different communities, these three town administrators are just simply amazing people to work with, they have been such great partners and great supports for us. And this as well, they've been very involved with this.
And then just one on the safety. So the safety is, we're doing all this, you're doing all this work, which is great, so just to put it all together, this is a reaction, or is this just an ongoing thing that's been happening, and we're just kind of going into it, and it all works together?
This really stems back to, when I first came in, actually, I think that's the first time I brought it up around this table, was when I first came in, and I could see then that we had holes, we had holes in our plans. I think the holes became more apparent, particularly after Parkland, you know, because some things happened there that we looked back and said, I think we need to review some of these things a little differently than we might have before. So I think that that changed it a little bit, but to be honest with you, if you remember back, it was during that budget season that we said, we're going to come and take a clear look at each of our schools, and have a comprehensive, remember that, comprehensive look, right? And so, you know, then we went through the whole process of finding a vendor, and working through all that detail. So this, for me, has been part, a two-year cycle leading up to, so I really appreciate the question, because I think sometimes people think, oh, this is just reactionary, it absolutely is not. It happens to look like that, but it absolutely isn't. It has been, in some ways, tying up loose ends, like other things, like fiscal loose ends, or curriculum loose ends, or whatever, this was, to me, this was another loose end that I noted early in my sojourn here.
Any other questions to Superintendent Clancy? Okay, so school committee, I'm, we're moving into the new business section of our agenda, and I am hoping that you would be okay with me flipping these items, because I'd like to start with the assistant superintendent position, and so I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clancy, who's clearly very excited...
I am.
...to introduce someone to us.
I am. So Mr. McGuire, I'd ask that you pull a chair up, please, thank you so much. So let me go through a little bit of process here, and kind of where we were looking at, and I just want to thank you for your time yesterday. I just can't tell you how much I appreciated spending time with you yesterday, it was really, really good. I got into my car, and I called Alita right away, and I said, I really hope that the school committee gives us the approval tomorrow night, because we are going to love working with this individual. And I think that you just bring a wonderful sense of energy and everything else, but to the school committee, let me just revisit a couple of things. So we had 53 applicants for this position, this particular position. You know that you've got a job description, and you've got a resume that's in your pocket tonight, that you got ahead of time, that you could take a quick look at. I am going to turn it over to Todd in a minute, just give a little bit of a synoptic of your background and your history at Wine Nishoba. And Todd is well aware of the digital literacy component, that is one of the components that we're looking at. So he and I talked a little bit more about that again yesterday, and so I asked him if he could maybe make a quick comment or two, specific to that tonight, too. So I am going to turn it over to him. Going back to the, in a second. Going back to the process, so we did a search committee process first, that I sat in on, and I think, I want to say, and we might, a seven or eight candidates is what we started with, and then we whittled it down to two finalists, and Todd pretty much was as close to unanimous as you're going to get, once we went around the table. And as I said to him yesterday afternoon when we were talking, I think we just felt, as a group collectively, that he was just the right fit for us. And as I said to him yesterday, his understanding of curriculum and instruction and assessment is deep, and that's one, that's one of the things I was really looking for. How he thinks about digital literacy is exactly how we want to think about digital literacy. I gave him the book, by the way, I took a copy of the book to give to him, too, so he had that. So Todd, why don't you just talk to us a little bit about background, Wine Nishoba, and then maybe a comment or two about digital literacy?
Sure. So thank you all for having me here tonight, it's a pleasure to be here. So I think I'll start with the Wine Nishoba, and I think I spoke about this to people around the table when I visited, and the research that I did on the school, and the conversations that I've had with people, it's clearly a student-centered district. And I come from a place of student-centered learning. I was in the classroom for 10 years, I did all of my training, thank you very much. I did all my training with the Essential Schools Movement, out of Brown University with Ted Sizer, and I spent my graduate internship year at South Gigan High School, which is a member of the Essential Schools Movement, and was subsequently hired there. So really, all of my values as an educator, principles as an educator, even as a person, come from that, that student-centered personalized teaching and learning approach, that I was then able to take with me and kind of move forward in my career. I then spent four years in the Linfield Public Schools, developing an interdisciplinary co-taught humanities program with them, and really jumped into an administrative program, and a CAGS program to get my leadership credential, where I then moved into a director role, a 7 through 12 regional district, Mascanama Regional School System, Oxford, Topsville, and Middleton, are the three towns, and spent seven years there as a director of social studies and humanities. Where we really began the blueprints for a one-to-one Chromebook initiative there, I also developed a global pathways program for a global diploma option for students to graduate, really setting them apart from their, their peers in the country, and really being competitive with those around the world, because the world is now really flat. And when, from there, I oversaw their NEAS accreditation process, the two-year self-study at Mascanama, and had the opportunity to join the Dammers Public School System two years ago, as they were looking for a director of curriculum and instruction. So that's where I've been for the past two years, a big part of the reason they hired me was because they, too, were going through an accreditation process, and needed somebody to kind of help and facilitate and bring that, bring that community together. So I've been there for the past two years, really being the lead on professional development implementation. We, too, have gone through a one-to-one Chromebook digital literacy initiative in the last two years, so I've run a lot of professional development around digital literacy, as well as supervision and evaluation. And I'm finishing my doctorate at the University of Massachusetts Lowell this fall, so I'm finishing up my research, and my research is in actually measuring student engagement in the co-taught interdisciplinary classroom at the secondary level. And that's what brings me here, really, I see a student-centered vision. The district improvement plan really spoke to me, in terms of what you're focused on, around social-emotional learning, student-centered learning, literacy, as well as digital literacy, and it's really what brings me here tonight, so...
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, I'm going to give the school committee a, actually, some more for others, because you guys have the information for me today. And then, if it's okay with you, I'd like to open up the school committee, see if they have a couple of questions for you.
Of course.
So welcome...
Thank you.
...to Nishoba.
Thank you.
We are very proud of our district, and we work very, very hard for our district, and our parents are incredibly supportive of our district. We're very lucky to have the support with time and resources, and just, it's any time you ask, you don't even have to ask, parents will rush in, so welcome, and it's going to be quite a fun ride for you. The, to the school committee, I know that we, I mentioned this earlier, I put this in an email to you, so what's the school committee's role in, this is one of the things that obviously comes, comes out of the work that we do with MAS-C, and by the way, if you were in Linfield, was Dorothy Presser there on the school committee?
She was the chair at the time I was there.
She's our MAS-C rep.
And her children.
She's phenomenal, so she's been guiding us for the past three years, and we couldn't have done half of what we did without her. So at any rate, so what is the role of the school committee? So the school committee obviously hires the superintendent, but we provide advice and consent. Advice, yes, advice and consent, on the business manager position, on the assistant superintendent's position, on the sped director's position, and I think that, I think that's it.
Those are the big ones, yeah.
So what does that mean to the school committee? That means that we are not the ones that are interviewing folks, the administration through the superintendent will do their due diligence, and then bring forward to us their recommended candidate, and our job is to provide advice and consent. Now that means, what does that mean? When would, don't get nervous. When would that not happen? That would not happen if the candidate didn't meet the qualifications. So we've all received Mr. McGuire's resume in the packet, we've all had a chance to hear from him. If you've got a question or two, again, we're not interviewing, but if you've got a couple of questions, let's ask, and it might be helpful for us and for the community to learn a little bit more about you. So let's do round robin, I've got one, but I'm going to wait. Question. Ms. Elaine?
Hi, you mentioned a global diploma, and on your resume, an application talked a lot about global education. Can you tell us a little bit more about what that means to you, and what kind of like values that you're trying to instill among the learners?
Sure. You spoke earlier about what does the Nishoba graduate look like, and that was a big part of the vision of mine in creating this pathway program when I was at Mascanama, and when I joined there, the director of World Languages asked me to join her in creating this pathway program, and so, because we felt it was really, really important to expose kids to the world outside of the microcosm of the tri-town. So what we did was we developed really an academic pathway, where they had to create a number of courses and a number of semester hours academically to complete that competency. They also had to have four years of a second language, they had to travel globally, they also had to do global community service, as well as do a senior global internship, the senior internship program was a requirement at that school. But if we were a global... at that school. But if you were a global diploma candidate, you need to do what was considered a global internship. So, all of those things combined would end up in a final senior year portfolio presentation, which happened in the foreign language to the committees so that they could earn that global diploma. It did become a model for Massachusetts. We presented on the model a number of times. But I mean, what it did for me is I had the opportunity to travel with kids all over the world and just honestly see how their lives changed as a result of those experiences. So, when they went to Costa Rica and we visited Earth University and their peers around the world are speaking five languages, it really energizes them to want to do the same. When we sent 15 kids to Malawi in an orphanage for three weeks, you know, they came back, changed individuals, basically having to bathe in the river with, you know, kids in an orphanage for three weeks. So, that program is something I was really proud of and just was able to see kids really find pathways beyond high school that kind of led them in that direction.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? Elaine, Lynn, did you raise your hand?
I will.
Oh, I thought you did. And then I'll come back after I go to Mike.
The one to one initiative, you did it in Linfield and also in Danvers?
We did it at Mascanomit and then in Danvers.
So, did you establish it? Did you build it? How did that work?
I was a part of it at Mascanomit. And then, when we moved on to Danvers, I was responsible for helping implement and initiate it at the high school level. And what we did was, we did a lot of research around really piloting a variety of tools, the iPad, the Chromebook, the MacBook, the Airbook, to identify what would be best for our students. We then identified pilots of teachers, pilots of parents, and pilots of students in that kind of pilot year. So, we could figure out, you know, what's going to be the most cost-effective way, what's going to be the best way that might be user-friendly for parents, the community. And so, we took a year to do that with all different constituency groups. And we decided on the Chromebook because it was most cost-effective. And it was also user-friendly with the Google Suite, which was the platform that we used in the district. So, we then did a tiered rollout. So, we started with the middle school. And so, that our middle school teachers and our students could then be the trailblazers. So, that when we implemented the following year of the fall at the high school, we were able to bring middle school teachers over to help us with PD and run workshops for teachers, as well as some of those eighth-grade students who then had the skills on the Chromebooks could then bring it to their ninth-grade year at the high school. This fall, we will implement it and roll it out to the elementarys.
So, that was the same for both school systems?
That was the one we've done at Danvers. It was very similar at Mascanomit, but it was starting, we started that process as I was leaving and taking on the new position at Danvers.
Does that go in towards the Chromebook also?
Yes.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just going to tie into Lynn's question. Thanks for your time.
Sure.
So, you spoke a little bit about digital literacy and digital learning. And with that, obviously, comes this notion of responsible use. And I'm wondering how you would promote and encourage that concept of digital citizenship and how you would embed that into the culture of digital learning.
Really important. And we've spent a lot of time on that. And we continue to learn as you roll out a digital literacy initiative. You do continue to learn. And I've continued to learn that when a particular teacher wants a particular application, you need to know that we can't just give you that application. We need to make sure that that company who has that application, let's say it's Actively Learn, or let's say it's Quizlet, for example. We need to make sure that that company is going to sign our student privacy agreement so that they're not selling student information to their vendors. And our kids are getting emails like crazy from all sorts of things. So, first and foremost around student privacy, those kinds of things, we need to vet appropriately. But when I came in, we wanted to make sure that teachers knew the difference between digitizing and actual digital literacy. It's very easy to digitize things and take all of your overhead notes and turn them into a PowerPoint and all of that sort of thing. But we want kids really not just substituting. We want them actually remaking, re-engaging, even more than augmenting. So, we want to send kids out to an actual historical site and have them actually create the video, create the documentary, talk to people, and learn those types of skills. So, it really took educating teachers on what digital literacy is so that they could then implement that for kids in the classroom. The other thing is that we began taking a look at, after the 2016 election, all of the things that were coming out all over Facebook and all of these different social media apps that kids listen to, that they look at. And we implemented the media literacy course. And that's something that we really needed to teach kids about. What is media? How do you become media literate? Teaching them that, you know, you need to look at a variety of resources before you just accept something to be true. So, we've implemented that. And then, as a way of communicating with the community, we actually developed a Danvers application for the iPhone. So, every kid, every parent, everyone in the community can download that application and get, we talked about communication earlier, and have immediate communication with announcements. You know, they can click on and email me, and it's right at the tip of their fingertips. And it's also teaching them, I think, maturity using that application. We let kids into the Power School Student Assessment Platform that we have so they can get on and see if they're missing an assignment. Their parents can do the same thing, all at their fingertips. So, that's been really helpful. And I also think it's increased communication between the community, parents, and the schools. Does that answer your question?
Elise.
I mean, you kind of already hit on what I was going to ask about. So, I'll just give you the opportunity to add anything if you feel like you forgot anything. Because my question was going to be, you know, I think a lot of districts do a really, or we've done a really good job of bringing technology in, but moving up to, from that, you know, substitution of the same remodel. And so, that was going to be my question, was, you know, do you have any thoughts about sort of how we get from closing the digital divide, which we've kind of done, but getting to that use piece of how we're actually using technology? And so, I feel like you already hit on a lot of my big questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've done some really good work. Because we have the middle school teachers who had, you know, kind of a year ahead of our high school teachers, I teamed up with our elementary and middle curriculum directors. And we developed a MASQ STEM when we went to the conference so that we had teachers teaching teachers. And we brought that to that conference so we could kind of educate other teachers into doing the same thing. That kind of professional development is not only promotes comfort amongst colleagues because they know who they're learning from, but it's also really cost-effective as well because you're, you know, looking at your expertise from within. So, that, too, has been really helpful. The other thing that we've brought into the district is the Learn Platform. And that allows every teacher, any administrator, to go on and actually make a request for a technological application or a software download. And they can go on, make the request. It comes to me. And then, I can go do all my homework and calling the vendor. It allows teachers to get a pilot if they want to do it, making sure that they're going to sign our privacy agreement. And if they're not, we're not going to entertain that. Because a lot of these companies are very, very new. And a lot of the people running these companies are millennials and in their 20s, just grab their digital whizzes. But they don't understand necessarily how a school district works and how we have to protect our kids. So, there's been learning on both sides of that. So, that Learn Platform has been very, very helpful because it's kind of a stopgap to say, "Wait a minute. Is this something we want for our kids?" And then, we allow teachers to assess whether or not it's working well in their classrooms.
Awesome. Okay, I think one or two. Elaine, you have a head.
So, all those ideas, I'm great. They sound expensive. So, I'm sure we all have to keep that in mind, that everything has a cost. But I actually was going to ask how you incorporate elementary-level learners into digital literacy and into student-centered learning, where they may be completely brand-new to technology, and what are the ways that we get them involved without overwhelming?
Sure. I think that's why that is the third phase of our rollout. And we're actually going to bring it down to third grade. So, our third, fourth, and fifth grade will implement this fall and not our one-twos yet because of that reason. I think that I've been very lucky because I work right next door to our elementary curriculum director. And we have a K through 12 vertical alignment. So, that's been really helpful. So, we learn a lot from each other. And she's certainly learning as we rolled it out at the middle school and at the high school. But we're bringing in a lot of hands-on kinesthetic pieces for the elementary school. We just brought in Google. And they did the augmented reality and the virtual reality Google goggles. So, things like that where we can take elementary kids on an expedition tour of the pyramids, and they all get to wear the goggles. And it's more of an experiential piece for the elementary. And I think at that level, that hands-on piece, before we go and just give them, say, a Chromebook. Exactly. So, we're slowly bringing that into the elementary. And we have a lot of teachers who are a little bit resistant because we're giving kids, you know, autonomy over a digital device. And it's educating parents. And it's running a lot of professional development for parents, the community, and teachers so they feel comfortable doing that. But we're starting with those kind of big circle, hands-on kinesthetic, like virtual reality goggles, having people come in and work with kids at that level.
I have a final question. So, Ashova's always, well, as long as I've been in the district, I've been here, not on the school committee, but in the district as a parent, been very strong academically, strong supports, both with our staff and, as a parent, I'm speaking as a parent, with our staff and with the community itself. So, I don't worry about the academics. I do think that, you know, some of the work that Superintendent Clutchy and you are going to be doing over the next few years is going to really drive us forward because we're still kind of, I think we're behind in a couple of things. But that's just my personal opinion. I want to ask you about culture. And the reason is because I think that's the hardest thing to impact. And social-emotional learning has been the buzzword for a long time. I do find it to be a buzzword because I don't think it should be called out as a separate thing. I think it's part of your culture, who you are, and what you do. So, my question is, how do you nurture? Okay, so, let me just stop and state the obvious. This district has been through significant change over the past, well, three years ago, we went, when we hired Superintendent Clutchy in, just a few months before that, to refocus the district on the student, to refocus the district on education and learning. And as a result of that, it has trickle-down impact because things change, the shifting sands, people feel like, "Oh, my gosh, where are things moving?" And I think over time, that's become more constant and consistent. How do you, what would you bring to our district as far as a culture of support and compassion? Because I think what's happened is, like any organization, when you go through a big change, you know, it's like, "Okay, we're all focused on the change, and this is changing. Well, now, everything's kind of settling." And you go, "What? Okay, so where do I go?" And that really impacts our kids. I mean, you heard some parents earlier tonight, you know, saying, "The kids are feeling kind of funky, you know. Is it because our staff is feeling funky?" So, what would you bring to our district?
I feel very strongly about building culture. I feel very strongly about being visible. And I love to bring people together. It's why I was hired in Danvers, to bring them through that self-study and that accreditation process. They had a 10-year report from before that was not good. They also had a major tragedy in the building four years ago. And they were a broken, broken, broken staff. And I was given the challenge to come on and to unify the staff. And they needed to, they needed to come together around this report because they had put off the accreditation visit for at least a year because of, because of the tragedy. I believe in not asking to do anything from anyone else that you won't do yourself. And you need to lead from the middle. And so, I participated in every part of that process for that staff and made them, helped them feel really good about the work that they were doing. And it was a celebration. Bringing that committee in that week, even during a blizzard where they were caught up in a hotel for a day, it was the best report I've ever seen. And it was something that was theirs. You know, I just helped facilitate the process. And I really believe in the power of positivity. That's really important to me. And that was my, I had my last faculty meeting last, yesterday. And, you know, I'd say it every year, just don't forget the power of positivity. Because when there's negativity in the room, you cannot move forward. When there's positivity around you, you always can. And that's really where I come from when I was a teacher at South Hegan. That's really what I learned. You know, I was an advisor to 12 kids for four years. And I kept relationships with them and their families. Even now, you know, I gave them their diploma across the graduation stage because I was with them for four years. So, I believe in that building culture piece and really being visible. I love to get into people's classes. I evaluate teachers every day. But I don't come in with a computer. I don't come in with a pen and paper. I get in and I dig in with them, and we learn together.
So, what would your, and this was the final one. I could ask you, Elaine, a question. But we'll do that another time. What would your staff say about you?
They would say, they would say that he has a smile on his face every day. And they would say that he makes us laugh all the time. And that he's very, very positive.
You could use that.
And they would say to me, "We don't want to lose you." How many, how many times did I hear that yesterday as I spoke with your staff? You know? And that was certainly after the fact because we had already offered the position to you, you know. So, if I can just wrap up with one or two things.
Yep.
As a school committee, you should have heard, this is more, I guess, management than anything, but as you spoke, you should have heard some key salient points. I mean, not that we rehearsed this because we didn't, but you heard him talk about PD. And you know that that's an area I want to focus him on. You heard him talk about the one-to-one rollout and how they did it. And we're also looking at doing some, some things very similar. So, his experience will be very helpful for our next two years. So, I'm thrilled about that. You also heard him talk about the humanities. And I know that I've mentioned before, you know, I see us focusing on the digital literacy for the next two years. But after that, the state is coming down with all kinds of new curriculum, well, standards and frameworks that he will be able to help us because this is an area of expertise. So, it's not just the obvious that's sitting here. It's what he's also got behind him. You also heard him speak this evening about the co-teaching model. And that's one of the things that you know is on your district improvement plan, right? We've had such good success with that, with Joan DeAngelo's and her work with Luther Burbank. And we're replicating that across the district right now. We want to see that going. He's got that expertise. So, that's perfect. You heard him talk about his lens with digital learning. You can see why he's such a great fit for us. Just so you know, too, I did mention to him yesterday about parent support of these three, did I not say that to you? I said, "In each of these three communities, that is a strength." And I said to people today, "I know that you're not coming because you're coming to a beautiful building." The building that you were in yesterday, that I was in yesterday with the high-backed white chairs.
About the substance.
And I said to him, "You will fight mice and wasps because that's what I fight every day." But having said that, it's not about that. It is about the people. It's about the experience. And it's about a fantastic district. And I said the same thing to him yesterday. You're coming into an area where all three communities so support and value their children in education. And it doesn't get better. And we've got such an amazing administrative team that he's going to walk into. We all felt, when he walked out, the whole team said, "That's who we want." So, without further ado, I'd like to put a move forward. And you see the positivity component in him, too, that we just love. So, I would put forward a recommendation that we hire Todd McGuire for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Schools, British Ashova Regional School District.
All right. Kathy, would you like to make, no, you've got to make a motion.
I move that we hire Todd McGuire as the Assistant Superintendent of Ashova Regional School District.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Elise, any last questions, comments? Kathy? She's so excited right now.
I am. I'm trying not to say too much. But I will say this. We have been working on this, talking about the position, crafting the draft description for two years. And there was a point, it wasn't me, I'm not going to mention anything, but somehow it came up, that a person such as this even exists. And I knew that that person did exist. And here you are. So, I'm thrilled.
Likewise.
So, any other questions? You better be ready to work. Like, we do not, okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Welcome to Ashova Regional School District.
And we're not letting you go until you've signed a contract. And I believe that Aunt Marie will walk you into the office.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome.
Can't wait to have you come.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to move forward into more.
Lending.
Exactly. Parts of our agenda. Treasurer's report.
Lending.
So, I'm so excited. No, no. I've been summer board signatures, summer board signatures. So, we, a couple of meetings ago, Pat brought forward, and in there, in your packet, the treasurer's reports. Technically, the treasurer reports to the school committee. But the way we do it is we work through the business office. And I think we had questions. And to be honest with you, I think it would be helpful for all of us to understand what your role is, what's your function, what do you do for us, just so that we and our communities have an understanding of that.
Sure.
So, hi, Vicki Chartier.
Hello, Lori. I am your district treasurer, as well as an HR specialist. I work in the human resource office. But I've pretty much taken all of the cashes of the district. My name is on all the checks that go out. And that's a very broad explanation of what I do as treasurer, but really, it's about the cash flow.
And then, can you explain, I wonder if we can pull up the treasurer's report. Can you just take us through those components, just to tell us, I mean, we're not going to, all we want to know is, tell us, tell the community what they're looking at when they look at one of these reports.
Sure. So, I'll start from the ginormous spreadsheet that I have, that I give Pat a copy of monthly. And that has, like, I just looked at MASE, and I think there's 460 lines. And it's pretty much every transaction that happens from the bank account. That ties into the general ledger with Budget Sense or Infinite Visions. And then, this is my own report. And it's really, it's not something I spit out of Budget Sense because it's more of like another check to make sure that... because it's, it's more of like a, another check to make sure that all the pennies are accounted for. So that's what this is. You see the beginning balance, um, all of the income for that month. So up top is the April balance, so that's how April ended. You see the beginning balance and then the income is listed in that, you'll see every quarter. So, um, May 15th, August 15th, November 15th, and February 15th are when we get our, we get the income from the towns. So every quarter, you see much higher income than the rest of the month. And then the expenses all tie out to the warrants. And then you have the ending balance for the month. And then the bank, the breakdown of the bank accounts, and I separated out the OPEB, which is currently at Unibank, we know that's all changing, but it's currently held in a separate account at Unibank. And then the general operating funds at Unibank and then TD Bank, Clinton Savings is also a general operating. That's, so Unibank, I have a, I'm able to do like check deposits at my desk, which is great, but I can't do cash that way. So that's why we have Clinton Savings as well. I know there's quite a few bank accounts, but, um, so we go to Clinton Savings, right down the street. That's where we also have student activities through. MMDT is really our investment. Um, that's where, it's a mass sponsored investment pool. And that's where we try to keep, I try to put, especially quarterly, large sums in there and then I transfer out for the warrants. And then Fidelity is one of our accounts. And then Hometown is really.
What's in Fidelity? What is that balance?
Fidelity was, it's just a, it's just another bank account that holds that amount. I've never actually transferred in or out of it. It just has a interest monthly. That was established before I came here and I believe it was established because us, the district credit cards came through there. So, um, that's, that's one of the accounts. So one of the recommendations from the auditors too, is to not just provide a monthly report to you, but to minimize our accounts. And that's one that we, we may minimize. Um, and Hometown is a separate bank account that is used for, um, our lunch deposits from Lancaster.
So, so let me ask you a question. So if the recommendation, this is really helpful. I don't know how you guys feel, but this is really helpful. If the recommendation from the auditor is to, is to collapse those accounts, that have fewer accounts, um, how would that happen? Do you make recommendations to the school committee? Because I would assume, how does that work out? Vicki, do you know?
So I've never gone to the school committee to open or close a bank account because it's general operating funds.
Got it.
But that, you know, as I look at it, I mean, that's easy enough to probably just close and put into MMDT. Um, if we were to do anything beyond the general operating in MMDT, we would bring somebody in to guide us, you know, to make the right choices, especially if we were talking about risky investments, which it's all general operating funds. We're not sure how much more we can do, but in the same way we're doing, you know, OPEB and having guidance with that, you know, that would be the same idea.
Yeah, it makes sense to have fewer accounts.
Well, there's a lot more than what you see here because it's not ju, like, when I say Unibank general operating, um, we have a lot of different online payments. So there's my school box that has to have a place to go, but cafeteria has to be separated from extended learning. So I have many bank accounts going across. That's just.
The big one.
The actual accounts that they're in, the actual banking.
Banking banks.
Yeah.
So how does that work get done? That kind of streamlining? That's a good word.
So are you saying to reconcile all the bank accounts? How does that get done?
No, I don't want to know about that.
Okay.
No, I mean, as far as the, how do we take the recommendation? How would we do that? How do we streamline those accounts to?
So, so for some of them, I would ask not to close because if we were to, if, the Unibank accounts have added to them because of the extended learning program being paid to my school box and having to separate that out from cafeteria because otherwise I wouldn't be able to reconcile. It can be a nightmare. Um, but to close some of them, it's simply just letting them know that we're closing it, we're moving it into another one of our, you know, established funds.
Oh, all right. That makes sense, but I think that's probably within keeping of, kind of all the work that's been done over the past couple of years anyway, right? Is the streamlining of. Lynn?
Fidelity, you said, is the credit cards? Do we still have credit cards?
We do, but we're, they're not often used.
It's not fidelity. It's, it's, that's originally when they were established, which was before my time. She, um, the previous treasurer utilized fidelity to establish the accounts, uh, to establish the credit cards.
So that's just.
For a lower rate on the credit cards.
Right.
That's why she uses.
But we're not using credit cards anymore?
No, we do because there are some, like Amazon or something like that, where they don't take the POs and so we have to use a credit card. So we've got, but they're not u, it's not used a lot. Like our, our credit cards aren't used very much.
Minimal balances, minimal.
So is that in like a, um, an investment or anything? Or is it just like a bank account?
That's, that's. Fidelity's a bank account. It's a savings that just generates interest.
So do we really need like $800,000?
So again, we did talk about closing a couple and that would be one that I would, I would, um, if it's the will of the school committee, I have no problem with.
Well, I guess my question is, and I, I want to understand this, so if all of you understand it and I don't, let me know, is that $800,000, is $800,000 sitting there? Is that part of our budget?
It's generating interest. It's part of our general operating, yes. So it's part of, it's part of, it's configured into your cash flow. It's part of your general, general operating. It just hasn't, we haven't need to, to go that low.
Okay, so I just want to understand.
Yeah.
So it's not like we've got $800,000 just sitting there and we're kind of killing ourselves to pay for.
No, 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 no.
That, okay. That, that, I think needs to be really clear because I'm thinking cha-ching, cha-ching, we can do these new programs, cha-ching. Like you're telling me no.
No, no, no. It's all part of the big, it's all part of the cash flow. It's, it's not just in hiding. Which I think is probably part of why, um, the auditors recommend a monthly report be provided to, so that you can, that you can see and it's transparent.
You know what? I am so thrilled you're going to do this. We need to learn as much as we possibly can. And the more that we know, the fewer questions you're going to get constantly from us because we're all figure it out and our communities will start to figure it out too. So, questions? Kathy, Kathy?
So if we were going to consolidate some, would it make sense to consolidate the ones with the low balances like TD Bank and Hometown? I mean, that's small amounts of money sitting there unless they're for a specific.
So Hometown is for a specific purpose. It's our cafeteria managers who drive from the cafeteria, go to the banks. So the Hometown set up established for Lancaster.
Yep.
Um, the rest go to Clinton Savings. So that's one that we try, that I wouldn't want to close down. Uh, the TD Bank, yes. There's a sessions account there, which is a very small amount. I'm not even, that was established a long time ago too. It has like $600, $600, about $600.
I haven't thought about it since.
And then there's an investment account at TD Bank, which is, I mean, it's just a money market, but it's minimal. That was, that was prior to me coming on. We had TD Bank. That was where the former treasurer did all of her work out of. So I moved to Unibank. So those are just two accounts that are, that are there.
Do they still take money out of that bank for Marion sessions? It was a teacher reward?
There's very little left in it. Every year, a small amount is taken from that student activity related.
Okay.
So, Lynn, you have a question?
I just want about the money market. Is that another account that you, I mean, is that something that budget warrants is keeping track of?
The MMDT account?
Yeah, it's a money market, right?
It's, um, let me just, I did print something off. It is a state-sponsored investment tool offered by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to its public entities. So it is general operating funds that every month I try to keep as much as we can in there that isn't going to impact our warrants. So I transfer out, and the reason there's so much in there, again, the end of May, is because we got our quarterly payments. So I transferred a large sum in and then I'm taking small amounts out to cover the warrants.
So at the end of the year, that'll be zero?
It won't be zero because we're never, we're never at a zero dollar.
Okay. And as far as student activities?
Yep.
$320,000, that's a lot. And I'm wondering, because they're always contributing.
Six schools.
No, and I get that, but, and it's nice to see that they have student activity funds?
I think the, I think the, and you know, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think the thing to remember is this is not a static account. It's like, it's.
It moves, yeah. Especially at this point, it's the, um, it's the end of May and a lot of activities are happening, particularly at the high school. And you'll see that that would spend down at considerable rates.
And if you have questions during the, at any time, feel free to ask or call or email.
I honestly have to thank you because I don't think we've ever had a discussion like this in my six years on the school committee. I, I do want to share with the school committee though, Vicki has a secret weapon.
That she doesn't even know about.
That she does know about it. Vicki is actually a school committee member in her town. So I think that, thank you for helping us understand through the lens of the school committee.
You're welcome.
And really, hopefully you'll feel comfortable enough coming forward and reporting out to us, moving up. Seeing Lynn nod her head, that's a big, huge sign.
So, yes, but we do have, um, I have my own school committee meetings on Wednesday. It's the third Wednesday of the month typically. So it makes a little.
But you know what's great? We have two a month, so.
That's awesome.
You can come.
It's just a matter of timing, so it might be a month or two beyond because of, so for example, I can't present, I couldn't present a report to you in the first week or two of May because I don't even have the bank statements, not May, but June.
But you're going to present a monthly report to us?
I will give you a monthly report, absolutely. And then I can come in when.
You know what? We'll figure it out, just as long as, we would love to have you come, is my point. We don't have to.
Absolutely. And I'll present reports monthly and.
Perfect.
Or I'll give you reports monthly and present when it's, when I'm able to.
I told you guys you're going to take on this year. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
She could present to the budgeting board.
Yeah, well, she could.
Yeah.
All right, so budget warrant. But we'll talk about that too.
Yeah, whatever you need.
Thank you, Vicki. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Really helpful, really, really helpful. Okay. Why don't we allow Joan to come up? Joan DeAngelis, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey.
Yep, thank you. So, um, you know, just in terms of wrapping up our year and, and having Joan DeAngelis come forward and just talk a little bit about SPED, uh, we asked her to kind of focus a little bit on SPED and she'll just present our pre-key numbers moving into the new year so you can take a quick peek at that as well. Um, I do want to point out, I want people to keep in mind that Joan's role is really the director of pupil and personnel services. So SPED is a component of her work. It is, it is not everything that she does. Um, and a lot of her work in the last two years, you know, a lot of our work, but certainly you take the lead with this, is with social, emotional issues that our children and sometimes our staff are having throughout the course of the year. And that takes up a, quite a bit of her time as well. So she's, she's going full tilt. She also attends all of our hearings, our mediations. She works very closely with our special education lawyer, um, and, which is very, very helpful. She deals with any OCR complaints, she deals with all of it. So her, her portfolio is really quite broad. But tonight, what we're looking at is just a quick update. You started, you started a couple of different programs this year. I know you want to talk about the success of those and where we're at. Um, I know that we've got a program already in place, there's our new program starting up next year in Stowe. Very excited about that. And we've got some, some kids that are already signed up for that, so we're really excited about that. Joan has been amazing, an amazing partner to work with. And I think she just brings so much to our table and I'm just so appreciative. Um, and the level of compassion, you had, you had spoken about compassion with, compassion with Todd tonight. I think the compassion that she has for our kids and for our families is just amazing. So Joan will turn it over to you.
So thanks for having me. I have very little voice and chasing this cold all week. Thanks for having me. I'm really excited to be here today because, um, there is such great work going on in the district under the special ed umbrella. So, um, the first thing I wanted to really talk about is last year, um, you supported not one program, but two programs in the district. Early Risers is our social, emotional program here at Florence Sawyer School. Class Connections is at Center School, Class D and S for a class. Communication, Language, Academics and Social Skills, so it's actually an acronym. Um, we have serviced 10 students across both programs in the district very successfully. I can't tell you enough about the administrators in the building and the staff in the building. So you build new programs, these are inclusion programs. So people are becoming familiar with a new population of students and they're welcoming students into their classrooms that may present some challenges and they need some support. There's been great coordination between, um, our consultants, our teachers that are in the building, our special ed teachers that are running the building. And all of our students have experienced tremendous amounts of success. Um, and we've built over time their opportunity to be successful and more independent in inclusion. So that was kind of like when I came in, I looked at that lens of how are we servicing students in the, in the district? And we really talked about what's the role of the power professional. So by building programs where people have expertise in areas of social, emotional, or autism, um, or complex, um, learning needs, we have found that building skills through programs has really fostered students being able to be successful in inclusion settings. So they get to practice preview and review skills. Um, we get to do modeled instruction. We do, um, a lot of dyads and triads with students. And then they actually get to practice those skills out in the mainstream. So, um, you know, 10 students have really benefited from these new programs and we have more coming. So, um, we've really found the tremendous benefit and I will tell you that Florence Sawyer has wrapped themselves around early risers in those students, the staff. It's not just the people working in the program, it's the entire staff. If you went to Center School, you would learn that that program feels like it's been there 10 years because people have just wrapped themselves around and supported those students. And, um, we've done some reverse inclusion, so kids get to practice in the classroom. Some of our regularized kids have gone into the classroom and practiced some skills with kids on a volunteer basis. And then they actually go out into, um, inclusion and kids are really finding success. And so I could tell you a million stories because I could cry because there's a few personal stories of students, students that have just flourished in these programs and have been so successful. So I can't thank you Superintendent Clenchey enough and the school committee for supporting us in building these programs. They've been a tremendous benefit and I think that we are really looking at the model of fostering independence and supporting inclusion in the district through these two elementary programs. So I'm going to move on a little bit to what's new for 2018 and 19. So as you know, um, when you build elementary programs, you need a brother or sister program at the middle school. So I came to you early on in the budget process and asked you to support a middle connections class at Hale. We have interviewed for that position. We have interviewed for that position, an offer has been made and accepted, okay, by a teacher, and we already have four students that are going to start that program in the fall. So Mr. Grady, it's been a fantastic addition as administrator in the district, knew I was coming pretty, I think on his first administrative retreat, he's like, "I'm getting a program soon," right? So we worked together all year to build this program thoughtfully. So we've identified a classroom, we've built a sensory room that already exists at Hale Middle School. There's a swing, there's all kinds of sensory equipment. We found a really great place for a classroom. We have a teacher now, we're going to be working on hiring instructional assistants to support kids. We're also going to be training the instructional assistants that are in inclusion, because again, we want people, kids to develop lots of relationships, so as they're ready to be in the mainstream, they can find success. So I'm really excited about middle school connections, and it's been highly supported by the Hale staff as well. They actually said to me, "Is this really going to happen in March?" And I said, "It is, it's been approved and we've been budgeted." So they've been very involved in the interview process and got to see, we actually have teachers come in and do sample lessons, so they got to see sample lessons with students at Hale, and they were part of the interview process. So I'm really super excited about that. The high schools, I have a lot to talk about, there's so much going on. You mentioned co-teaching at the middle school. You know, we started that initiative last year to do the co-teaching math. I am super passionate about co-teaching, that inclusionary model where special ed teachers take their expertise with a content specialist and work together to deliver effective instruction so kids can, you know, meet high standards. So one of the things that you asked me when I reported out on that, you know, "How long before we see any results?" So our first pilot was Luther Burbank, we piloted at six, seven, and eight, and in one year's time, I told you there was a gap, we saw the gap between students' progress. In one year's time, we had seen and now we have a gap, just in one year. So this year, two more grade levels, grade six and eight here at Florence Sawyer and six and eight at Hale have jumped on board with us. They are doing the co-taught, and next year, we will be completely co-taught six, seven, and eight at the middle school level. So why do I tell you all that? Because it lays a framework for special ed and content-based teachers. This is really an important part of us integrating our expertise with one another. So on to the high school. So, you know, this is a reason why I'm talking about a little of this backdrop. So, you know, we're looking at high school data of students. We have lots of models to support kids at the high school, but what we were finding was, we have an academic learning center at the high school that we predominantly have provided academic support for students in science and social studies. We didn't have a co-taught model, we didn't have small group instruction, and we were finding there was a cohort of students that really needed a content expert and a special ed teacher to be working together to really look at those content areas, vocabulary heavy, a lot of reading comprehension strategies that are really required. So when we looked at the data and we looked at the students, we said, "Can we work with the departments to help us build something else for our students?" So this didn't, this didn't come with any financial obligation. We looked at the schedule, we worked with the principal, the special ed department head, the content area department heads, and they are working with us now to bring us not only support around the social studies, to bring small group social studies to the high school, but we're also going to roll out three co-taught science classes at the high school next year. So I'm really excited about that. And for our late starts, our special ed teachers will be working with their content-based educators to bring their expertise and working with the content-based expertise to really bring our students forward. So really excited about that as well.
Can you explain what co-taught means?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. So co-teaching is a blending up the regular ed teacher and the special ed teacher, that they're both in the classroom at the same time. And so oftentimes, you go into classrooms, and if it's a truly co-taught model, there's a marriage between those two people, hopefully a good marriage. It really is about creating an atmosphere where the special ed teacher is bringing their backup expertise. How can I modify a content? How can I learn and become a content expert in a particular area? So you might walk into a classroom and see the special ed teacher teaching the whole group, and the regular ed teacher is part of that instruction. But when, after you do a mini lesson for 15 or 20 minutes, you're breaking up in small groups, and you're devising groups based on what a kid's need in order to understand. Do they need a reteach? Do they need practice? So we're breaking them up, and they're working either with the special ed teacher or the regular ed. So you're using data based on what's going on in that model to support the instruction.
I think it's important, Joan, too. This doesn't just happen.
Oh, no.
So I think that that's important for people to understand, too, because we, we talk about this, like, we all, we all get it, but I think people need to understand that there's a lot of background that has to happen first before this is rolled out. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So we have worked with Kelly Hilton at Teachers 21. She is a, she does professional development around co-teaching. That's who we've used, we've had her come in. She has actually done a lot of co-teaching, because that means we're co-planning. We're deciding who's designing the lesson, how are we changing the lesson, how are we using manipulatives in the classroom to make the learning meaningful for all students, I'm sorry? And then, how are we breaking up groups based on data to support reinforcing the content so kids have mastery of skill? So it's, it is really a good marriage, you have to find a good match, you have to find people that work together. So we've done not only the content work and the planning work, but we've also talked about methodology. So when we started this last year at Luther Burbank, the content teachers are used to being right in front of the room, "I'm going to teach the lesson, this is what's going to happen." And slowly, as this PD evolved, it was like, they were able to say, "Okay, you special ed teacher have some really specially designed instruction that would benefit all my students," and you started to see the special ed teacher being the leader of that lesson with the regular ed teacher blending in the support. So you're taking two areas of expertise and really providing thoughtful instruction for students in a way that's meaningful.
I have a question. When we did our staff roundtables, and so much, the staff came in and met with the school committee and individual members, and we asked a series of questions, and one of the things that they were concerned about was the ACS at the high school, this facility that you're, or portion of the facility that you're talking about not being there, like...
So the academic support center really was for regular ed students. The learning center is really the special ed supports that we provide, so they're two different venues.
So is the ACS coming back?
Yeah, that, that was one of the things, this is kind of totally separate from Joan's view, but.
Sorry, sorry. But if you brought it up, so I get to say it, or ask for it.
So, you know, I think we took a look at it, and this, actually, this look, this, the lens on that particular area happened when Perry was still here, Dr. Graham was still here, and we had concerns almost two years ago about what we saw, and I said, "At that time, let's play it up for another year, we'll see what happens." We still felt uncomfortable last year, and so when Paul D. Domenico came in this year, we said, "You know what? I think it's time to just start anew." You know, my understanding was that it was award-winning at one point in time, that program. And, you know, I said to Paul D. Domenico, "We, we need to bring that back to be an award-winning program." And the pathway, quite frankly, that I saw on it, and this is not being negative to anyone, and I want to be really clear on that, it's not, but as a manager of an organization, as the leader, you look and say, "I think we can do better here." And so we wanted to take a very fresh look at that program and do a reframe and rebuild.
So it's not something that Joan's involved in?
Not, not yet, anyway.
But I was just wondering, it sounds like, because the comments were, it was, it was a stopgap for some of the kids, I mean, it really had a need, but as you're talking, it sounds like that's a good fit. So there's, so those two separate programs?
So there were districts that do different types of alternative learning centers, and you really have to investigate how you're going to roll that out. So some, some of them are really for regular ed programs. We had that in, when I worked in the Attleboro Public Schools, we had an alternative, and at that center, students could go in if they were in regular education and need a reteach and really set up an appointment. So we had certain periods of day where they could go in and either work on a study guide or a certain math con, and we had regular ed teachers staffing it. So you have to do it in a very planful way when you do it. I have not been involved in that here in this district, but it's something that requires a lot of thought and planning of how you rotate staff in and out, because again, you could have an alternative learning center, but you just say, "I'm going to have one teacher attached." No one's a content expert in all areas, so you have to really think about, "How do I provide supports for content-based instruction for all students, and how do I develop a schedule so that content-based experts can provide those supports for students?" So that's not under my umbrella. The learning center at the high school is more of, for special ed students who need required support, long-term projects, writing assignments, you know, there's individually tailored IEP goals that really target supports for those students through the learning center, and that is staffed through a special ed teacher.
Alright, so why don't we get to your next slide?
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Okay. I will picture preschool. So you asked for an update of where we were for preschool enrollment, so, you know, here are the numbers. All of our role model slots are currently full. Any returning role model has been offered a slot, and they've all gotten slots. And you can see what the ratios are in terms of each school. So you might see some of the numbers are small in some of the schools, so if I look at Mary Rollinson right now, the three half-day PM program has two special ed students with eight role models, you know, kids are going to be turning three next year, so we're going to be welcoming more kids. So just be mindful of that, that we'll be filling more slots. But I think that we're closer to that one-to-one model than we were when we started, where we had, you know, classes of just role models with, you know, one special ed student or no special ed students. So, yeah, questions about that?
Questions? Elaine?
Actually, to what you just said, students are going to be turning three, or maybe somebody moves into the district. There's only one five-day full-day program besides Little Links, which I know is like a separate category.
Yep.
And it looks like, right now, there's 14 students in the class. You only have room for one student. So what happens if two children turn three, or two children move into the district?
Yeah, so I think that as kids are turning three, you know, most of those students right now are turning four. We typically start off with a three-day model with our three-day students, so every student's plan is very different. It's a lot for kids to come in a full day at three years old. A lot of parents don't want students to come in for a five-day program. We have a version of that going on right now. We recommended a five-day program to a parent, and they just feel like that's too much of a long day for their student, that they need a nap in the afternoon. So we've respectfully said, you know, "What will work for your schedule," and we'll add to that program. So every student is very individual. I think that if we get beyond where we need to be, obviously, I'll be having that conversation with the superintendent.
Okay, sorry, I thought the IEPs were defined more by the service needs, and less about, like, easing them into a system, or what the parents were comfortable with their maps and things like that.
Well, we, no, we'll, we make a recommendation in terms of what students need for an IEP, but I will tell you, a lot of our three-year-olds, a five-day program is too much. So I rely on teams to make recommendations, I don't make them. There are times when parents will say to me, "I think five days is too much, it's a lot, my child needs a nap in the afternoon." So it really has to go based on what kids, I can't predict what a team is going to recommend. If they think a child needs a five-day program, we will make that recommendation. If we get beyond where we need to be in terms of slots, then we'll be having a conversation about how we're going to manage that.
Yeah, it just doesn't feel like there's much wiggle in there at all.
So if you find that you have more students that are moving into the district, you're going to be coming to the school committee? Okay. Anything else?
I mean, our job is to advocate for kids, so if we are in a situation where we need more, I'm not shy about coming to tell you that I think we need more. I, I think you know that, based on my answers in the past.
Alright, any other questions, Joan? Thank you very much for...
Sorry, I have one more question. Yeah, just about, so this was a big deal this year, when this happened, and so what are we doing next year, either at the end of the year, in the middle of the year, whatever it is, to evaluate, to see if this is, to see if it's as effective as proposed, if people are, basically, there's a spectrum of things that can happen. On the, the best end of the spectrum, everybody's like, "Yay, like, we love it, we're all bought in now." And in that case, I think there's things that we can learn about what we could do better the next time something like this comes up. Or there could be serious problems that maybe need to be addressed, and we're somewhere in the middle there, and I think either way that we probably should know what those things are, so that we can evaluate and assess.
So, so I'm going to jump in before you answer the question. So it has been our practice, anytime a program is added to the district that comes up through the school committee for a vote, that is why that calendar is built the way that it is, because we will require a full year's review of the program. Tell us what happened, tell us what worked well, tell us if, if there are components of it that didn't work well. You don't have to give us all the details, you want to understand why it didn't work well, and where do you propose to go in order to fix it? So what you're asking for is, and this is part of it, this is part of it, the, you know, Joan came to us last year and said, "Can I have two programs?", thinking we'd give her one, and it was like, you need, she needs two programs, give her the two programs. So we're not the SPED experts, so to your point, yeah, unfortunately for Joan, she gets put on the agenda, but any program that we ask for.
I was just going to say, and to be honest with you, that's just part and parcel of what we do consistently. I mean, even as we watch the pre-K roll out next year, we probably won't wait until February or March to say, "Jeez, how did it go?", we'll be monitoring it consistently. And that's what we do on a regular basis.
So you want to put it on November, or December?
November's too soon. I, I think December, January, I'm guessing, would be where we would start to.
Maybe here is probably.
Maybe here is probably what we need to do.
Yeah. Because we'll know more at that point about identification.
No, budget, we wouldn't do until after the council, because of the way we did it this year, find out what the educational needs are, and then do the budget. I don't want a budget to dictate what...
No, I understand it, just that the timing needs to be a little bit more, you know?
Yeah.
That we need all the...
Yeah, I agree. Okay, anything else for Ms. Joan? Thank you for building your programs, bringing your kids. We want more programs, so there you go.
I've got one coming.
Thank you.
I actually have a question. Can I just ask one quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
It wasn't on your update, but I was just curious, because you came in earlier in the year to talk about the program out in the community, and you were trying to add more businesses that the kids could go and work at.
Oh, yes.
And I loved hearing about that program, and so I wanted to hear some...
That's one of my favorites, the transitions program.
Yes.
So we had some change in staffing and transitions. You probably know that Julia Wilde relocated mid-year, which made some complexity for us, but we were able to find the long-term stuff to fill into that position. And we have hired somebody, so we're really excited about someone who does specifically the job coaching. I actually just nailed down a job today for a student to work with our custodial department, and it's going to have an internship, so. We're using things that we have not only in the district. I've met with Tom Hool about giving some of our students some baking and cooking opportunities for job coaching. So we are continuing to expand and look. One of my big, you know, big part of the work this year is to find a location off-site that would further develop some job sites. So I have identified a place, but I haven't quite...
Not ready to bring it forward yet.
I'm not quite ready to bring it forward.
She's saying, "Don't say it!"
I'm not going to say it. I've been really working on, like, we went out and looked at another number of places, so if my dream site becomes available, that also gives us probably four or five more opportunities to expand jobs right on that site. So really excited about that program. And now, having someone full-time, you know, in that position, unfortunately, some things got stalled because of that change, but just really excited about the potential of this space. And, you know, we have two students this year, and I've talked to you about independence, 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 and employability, right? I said that a thousand times when I was here last time. We have two students that are out working independently in the community, which is really wonderful, because that means that translates into employability skills. So kudo to Rob Freswitz, because I might be having another student living in the head and nod.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, I'm, I'm running around building, making connections as much as I can for my students and their, and their interests, obviously, and where can we do skill development? So stay tuned, I'll be back to talk about it, because I'm close, right?
Yeah, really close.
I'm close?
Alright, one last one. Let the woman go.
To help Elaine on, so what would you consider, these, these early risers? When you look at it, what, what translates as success for you?
So if I look at early risers, and those are, and RISE, those are our social emotional programs, so what's success? Success is students are making relationships, they're developing social skills, they're successful in inclusion, they're successful academically.
So do they have a different report card?
They do not. Their report card is the same, but we're trying to build tools in their toolbox to deal with whatever the social emotional factors are that are in their lives, so they can manage and be successful at school. Because if you've got some things that are going on underlying, that really can get in the way of your learning. So we're thinking about, how can we build those tools in your toolbox? How can we use supports in our schools to help foster success over time?
So do you work with the parents on that?
We do. We have very, we have a lot of parent consultation that goes on in the district, so when you think of, when you look at early risers and RISE, we have parent consults that go on monthly, we have teachers, school adjustment counselors, and parent professionals that support those students. We also have a psychiatrist, Dr. Balanci, that does monthly consult with us to continue to help us in looking at students and working on growth over time.
Okay.
You know I could talk for hours.
Thank you, Joan.
Great, thanks for having me.
Okay, summer warrant signatures. Who's bringing that forward? Ms. Pat?
Um, I guess. For the, for the summer warrants, we need to come up with a, an option for having, like, either the budget and warrant committee, or a group of people to sign the warrants.
You need, you need five for the quorum? How many do you need?
If you, if you do the budget and warrant, then you need two of the three, if you assign them. Last year, how we did it is, I think we signed the budget and warrant, and then we put in the motion, in the absence of the budget and warrant member, another member from the whole committee could sign in their absence, just to make sure we had the three.
Three.
I think that's how we did the motion last year.
So we're looking for the budget and warrant subcommittee to, would it be all three or just two that need to sign?
Two as a quorum.
Two, right, of the budget warrant. Okay. So what's the motion on that?
So don't you have a quorum? You need three?
Not if the, not if the subcommittee is only three people.
So what she's suggesting, well, what we've done in the past is, we need to vote in order to assign the responsibility of signing the warrants to the budget and warrant subcommittee.
Right.
Because all you people are on your votes all summer long. And then if, if the school committee votes to approve that motion, then only two of the three budget and warrant subcommittee members need to sign those warrants.
Otherwise, you need five, right?
Right.
But if the budget and warrant people aren't there, are two still okay?
That's part of the motion.
That's what Alita's saying.
So if all three, if two, if two of the three are gone, then the motion would be to allow another member of the whole committee to sign in their absence.
And so if two is still good, okay.
So which one of you lovely people captured all of that so you can make a motion? I think Kathy did.
Kathy Koye?
Last time we looked, yeah.
I moved that the school committee assign responsibility for signing the warrants over the summer months to the budget and warrant committee.
And in the absence?
In the absence of two people being available to budget and warrant to sign it, then an additional person from the committee will step up and, assuming, assuming that Alita will put the call out if you need anybody, that's not part of the motion.
That was really well done.
I don't think you're paying attention.
Steve, second. Any questions? All those in favor, let's roll on through. And Mike, are you with us?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Alita. Alita, thanks for the guidance. Old business.
I'm old business.
Yeah. So FYE, okay. So the Pat and superintendent clenching met with the newly constituted budget and warrant subcommittee. And Steve is our chair of that subcommittee. He'll be sharing some details with you later on. But one of the things that we went over was, they, I don't know if you recall, in the last meeting, Pat presented the FY18 budget transfers, year-end budget transfers. And we talked about how could we make this document a little bit more intuitive for people to understand. And so some columns were moved around and some headers were tweaked in order to allow anybody who picks up this document to get a better understanding. So can you take us through the quick overview and then let's see if anybody has questions?
Okay, the document really hasn't changed all that much, but what I did do is I-
Well, in terms of the numbers.
As far as the numbers, it hasn't changed, except that that one error that we found, I corrected that. Basically, what I've done is I've, I've put in asterisks to describe what is actually in each column. And for the fiscal year 18 current budget, that would be as the budget was voted in fiscal year 2018.
So that's this column right here.
The very first column.
Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Because I know people in the bank can't be whether they're, yeah.
So the next column is whether or not this, we need an increase or a decrease in that budget line to accommodate expenditures coming forward till the end of the year. And that adjusted, and that would bring me to the next column. And I, my explanation for that would be the adjusted fiscal year 2018 budget after requested transfers. And then the third item that I put asterisks on was a description of what the fiscal year-to-date expenditures and encumbrances are. And basically, what that is, is the year-to-date expenditures plus the projected expenditures for that line till the end of the year.
So what we've already spent and what we know is coming that we will be spending?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. So does this, and then the remaining balance after the transfer?
Correct.
So does this help you folks with the better, I mean, some of you already got it, some of us didn't, but does this help Kathy?
Well, I know that I kicked this off by my concern that I didn't understand what the, no, but teeing up to say that, I like the fact that, and I'm assuming anything in parentheses is a decrease from the budget.
Yes.
Okay. And that they're all together, and then the areas that need more money follow that.
Yes.
And so one can assume that money going into those increases are coming from the areas where there was a decrease.
Exactly.
Okay, I have it now. Thank you. And then the bottom line, which is left over after everything, is the $416,000.
Yes.
Okay, nope, I got it. Thanks. And thanks for doing this. And thanks for being, you're a good teacher.
Okay, everybody good? Do you need us to vote on this, or is it just an FYE?
Yes, we do need to vote on this because we didn't vote last week.
Okay, Steve.
I move that we approve the budget transfers from the end of the year.
Which is a different FY18.
Okay. Second is Kathy. Any questions? All those in favor?
No.
It's unanimous. I think we're good to go on that. Thank you, Ms. Pat.
Thank you.
And now you're going to talk to us about E and D. This is, this is important, too.
The E and D.
So.
It is cold. Is, are you, well, you're not, you've got a really cold outfit. Are you guys cold?
Thank God.
It's cool, it's cool.
I almost took a shoulder.
I was about to begin with.
Ah, there you go.
Yeah, but it's over now.
That's right. I didn't think I was going to put it at the table, but you know.
I said, "Brooke, why don't you bring him up? Since you're a fisher."
Very nice, very nice.
Okay. What you got for us, Pat?
So I have a comparison of E and D over three years, and that would be three years from fiscal year 18 back to fiscal year 16. So the first line is the E and D that was approved by the state, the Department of Revenue, for each year. So now the most recent one that we talked about last meeting, the 1,388,563, that was approved on 7-1-2017, as of 7-1-2017. So you can see the differences between the years.
Can I also speak about this, too, Pat?
Sure.
Just to give that broad stroke overview, because I think this is important, too. And I want to make sure, because I know Kathy made a comment at the last meeting, I want to be, I want to really be clear on our E and D. From my perspective, we have to have a solid E and D. I'm not looking at three or four million, that's not what I'm looking at. But as soon as it gets to about that one million or less, I'm not, honestly, I'm not comfortable in a district our size, a budget our size, to have less than a million dollars in there. Now, I also want to step back for those, those who are new or are new to this concept. What had happened in the past, prior to the forensic audit coming out, is administration would borrow 1, 1.2, 1.5, 1.6 million, and then at the end of the year, put it back in. And so it was just this constant revolving. Now, sometimes they had that money, you know, all of it to put back in, sometimes they didn't. So, so I would want to be clear on that. When we looked at planning this year's budget, from my perspective, this is not about that, that we have saved money or there's lots of residual money. We have to plan so that we can put that money back in, or it continues to erode. We, we can't have that. And so from my perspective, this has to be planned. And in order to get off the hamster wheel, the forensic auditor told us that we need to, and I totally agree, we have to have the goal that at some point in time, I would project the next two to three years in a perfect world, if we could do it, that E and D would be standalone, not touched. That's, that should be where we are, from my perspective, but we're not there yet. And the other thing that's a little confusing is that that certification of that money is always like one year out of sync. So I don't want to go into details on that, but it's complex. So I don't want people to think, oh, it's just as easy as transferring money in and out. It, it just isn't that way. For us not to have had the additional funds at the end of this year to put back in would cause me grave concern. So I don't, you know, I know that it'd come around the table, if we have extra money, it should go back, back to the communities. Not right now. It can't. It has to continue to stay in that E and D.
Until we stabilize it.
Until we stabilize it. Once it's stabilized, it's a whole different ballpark. But right now, we are on that hamster wheel. We're trying desperately to get off it. You'll notice this year, I mean, this number here, this 800,000, is our number for this, this budget season, right? But we, it was a million last year, but we didn't put a million back in. And that, that's disconcerting. We need, if, if we had more than 500,000 right now to put back into that E and D, that would be my recommendation. I mean, I know that we still have the other pieces that we're looking at, the stabilizer, yeah, the two stabilization funds, the OPEB and the TURF, because those are big things that we know are on the horizon anyway. So we have to be fiscally, stewardship that we're having here has to be fiscally responsible for the money and planning and being thoughtful about this. But I really feel strongly that that money, that at the very least, that 500,000 or whatever is there, goes back in to feed that. Now, as it is right now, this is your, this is what your number, in essence, is. I'm comfortable with that, but not as comfortable as I would like to be. So I just want to, that's a big picture, I know, but.
Mike, and then Kathy.
Yeah, so Brooke, with respect to the recommendations from the forensic audit about moving away from this tendency to pull and then hopefully return, it's my understanding that the E and D fund is specifically there to accommodate deficiencies, right? So under what circumstances would the?
One-time expenses.
Right, so for example, I guess that's what I'm, what I'm asking. When is it okay to say this is expressly what this is for?
Well, a perfect example would be, I mean, we're not there, right? But let's say, let's say, for example, that was 2 million. In a perfect, in Brooke's perfect world, $2 million, okay? And the Leaching Field project came in online. And we said, and, and we had to do something immediately. And, you know, our, DOP was not working with us like they are right now. And they came along and said, "You have to do this." And then we could say, "Okay, we've got the 300,000 in there. We can pull that out of there and do it," you know? So, probably being example.
Like free cash.
I'm sorry?
It's like free cash.
Right, no, I understand that. But have we, have we codified what kinds of expenses are reasonable to be able to pull from E and D and what, what we shouldn't be doing? I'm assuming we shouldn't be chipping away at little expenses, but we should be saving in case there's a major.
This is like a savings account for emergency funds.
And that's where we want to be, rather than doing what we're, I'm not saying that anything that we're doing right now is wrong.
What has happened.
It's just, it's just, yeah, it's what's happened, and we're just working our way at getting it in there.
It was kind of the operational model for a long time, that the money, big, big chunks of money were going in and coming out. So when money is, big, big dollar numbers are going in and coming out, it's really kind of hard to track all of that and understand. And then you're kind of expecting it. And when it's not there, how are you going to offset, how are you going to pay your bills? How are you going to pay your mortgage, you know, if it's not there? So what kinds of expenses? I mean, what Brooke just described would be something she would come to the school committee for and say, "Look, guys, we need to do this." But right now, like, I mean, I think those of us that have been on the committee for a while are very sensitive to not touching that. Because the alternative of them, if something happens and this district needs money, the alternative is we have to go back to our communities and we have to say, "We need more money." And I don't want to have to do that. I mean, right?
Yeah. And Mike, I know that you, I know that you absolutely get this.
Yeah.
It's just being fiscally respons, I think it's just being fiscally responsible. But I just wanted to give the broad picture. I know that you're giving kind of the details, but I think the broad picture needs to be put out there. We need to remember where we were, where we are, and where we want to be.
This is really helpful, Pat.
Kathy?
I'm sorry.
Just to be clear, we're not under any obligation to return money to the town unless we exceed the 5%.
Right.
And I know that it was an issue in the past and part of discussion, but it really, if we're at a point where you want to be, that is our priority.
We were so close to the ceiling on that, what, three years, four years ago?
Yeah.
We were so close to the ceiling on that. Like, why stockpile the cash and we can use it to?
Well, let's not talk about that.
No, but, but no, that's not where I'm going with it. But I think the point was, and at some point, we said we were going to do this, maybe this is something, Steve, we put on budget and warrant. Steve, put it on budget and warrant to make a recommendation as to what the appropriate, comfortable, recommended level of E and D is for the district so that we can bring that forward at the next school committee meeting and have that discussion. I think we need to solidify where do we want it to be versus kind of like this kind of squishy thing. Do we want it to be, not you, not you folks, but do we want it to be the, do we want to go as close to the 5% as we can? Do we want to keep it at 3%? Do we want it to be a dollar number? Do we want it to be 1.5? So I think that's what we should do with the next budget warrant.
I would just like to make a comment.
Sure.
Coming on to the school committee last year, at the end of your horrendous time period of trying to get everything organized and back under some level of control, I think it's important that we, A, have that in the back of our mind, what, what the committee went through. But we also have to be able to look ahead and see things that are coming down the road and be able to plan for them, whether it's budget increases, stabilization funds, addition to the E and D, or whatever. It's very important for us to now look forward in a budgeting manner because that's, we're going to have some significant impacts to our budget over the next couple of years. Healthcare, other, other issues like that, the potential of a feasibility study for the, for, for a new high school. I'm not going to say for the new high school, I'm going to say for a new high school possibly. And then the large expenses that may come as a result of that feasibility study. So I think we, we really kind of have to break from the past to a large extent and really look forward. And that's how we also are responsible to our audience, to our students, to the parents, to the town, to the taxpayers of the three towns.
I think that, that the administration that's been in place for the past two years has done a phenomenal cleanup job of doing just that. So I think the mantra, again, to your point, is we're ready to go. We are ready to go.
It's the mindset, I'm saying.
Yeah.
You need to.
Well, you know what? Walk in their, walk in our shoes and then, wait, I hear you. But we will never forget, nor should we, nor should this community forget.
No.
So I hear what you're saying, but you can't move forward unless you respect where you've been. Okay, district improvement. Are you done?
No, I have recommendations.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Steve, you turned me on.
Actually, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. Well, it's gone. There it is. Okay. Isn't that what you want? Yeah, that's fine. For the fiscal year 18 year-end recommendations, Lorraine asked me to put up something that we can look at and we can vote on as far as.
So these are the recommendations. Now that we've come to the end of the school year, these are the recommendations that came up at the last school committee meeting, but there was some confusion as to what we were doing. So Brooke, do you want to go through each one of them?
Sure. I'm happy to do that. So the first one is, you know, they're pretty, all, they're all pretty self-obvious, I think. But let me just speak to each one of them. The turf field stabilization fund, you'll recall that we had a small pocket of money that we're transferring over to that right from donations years ago. So we're doing that. So this would be our first pass at putting a chunk of money into that. We know that, just to give you an idea, Tanya and I were standing there, actually, you were at that lacrosse game, too, that night. And Tanya and I were standing there at the, on the, the track, actually. And she said, "You know, Brooke," she said, "See how you're seeing more and more of that black rather than the red? That's an indicator to us that we're getting closer and closer within the next couple of years of having to do something with this track." And so we know that now, to your point. We know we have, we can see this coming. It might be two or three or four years away, but that gives us time to get some money into that account. So we're recommending that 50,000 So we're recommending that 50,000 that we've got is available to us, we put into that. The other is the obvious OPEB. I don't think I even need to have any discussion on that unless you want me to, but I'm very comfortable in moving that. That's in addition to what we've put in this year and in addition to what we have got budgeted for next year. So that's like a little extra. And I feel, I feel good about that, although I'd like, I'd like it to go into E and D, but I think I said to you at last meeting, I hearken back to that gentleman at the Bolton meeting saying, you know, and I know that people understand that we have to build that OPEB fund up. We have, we don't have a choice, we have to do that. The other thing, with regards to the fleet, right? So let me just talk about the fleet very quickly on this. And, you know, we've got a number of vehicles. We've presented once before the fact that, you know, the notion that what we want to do is kind of do at least one vehicle a year to keep our fleet up. The vehicle that we're looking at replacing this year is a pickup truck. It's, it's, it's in horrible shape. We don't believe it will pass for safety. So then that leaves us with, do we put a lot of money into this thing to get it to be compliant or we just say, look, we already know this, you know? And even at one a year, that's not, that's, that almost doesn't kind of do it for us, to be honest with you. So we, we had suggested, when we built the budget, and I'm, and I'm gonna go back and say, I think this was a mistake on our part, so I'm gonna put that out there right now. We had it in there in the first, the first pass of the budget, like, over a year ago, like a year ago in January. And we pulled it out with the notion that if there was any residual money, we would take it at the end of June and put it towards that. Because we all knew that the vehicle fleet has to be evergrained. It's, it's no different than facilities or whatever, where you have to keep something up. So this year, when we came along to do it, if you remember, the January 20th pass, there was a vehicle on there. And then we pulled it out as we could, and I think you, one of you made the comment the other day at B and W, and I thought it was so apropos. It's an easy thing to pull quickly because it's that money that you can say, okay, that might help to keep a teacher here or whatever. But the, the truth is, I think that that wasn't in our best interest. I think we need to keep it on that budget line. It's almost like a non-negotiable. Every year, we, we have to do this. We've got sped vans we need to keep up. We've got a, a truck and plow that we need to keep up. Like, we, these are, we have to have these things, you know? We move things all over the district because we've got three communities, so we need this truck. So I think it was a mistake on our part, from my lens right now, to have removed it from the budget line. I don't think we'll do that again. I think we'll keep it there so that we don't have to, because in essence, I believe we've done the same thing this year, like going into 19. So looking at 20, I think it's imperative that we just leave it on that line as a non-negotiable. So that's a perspective. I'm not suggesting that that's the only way to do it, but that's my perspective. So I leave it to the B and W committee to make any additional comments if I miss something. Steve?
No, I, I fully agree because I've run, I've run fleets before. And you have to have a program replacement cost. Otherwise, the annual maintenance, just the annual maintenance cost of the vehicle gets to the point where, you know, am I gonna buy a new one or am I gonna fix this one? Am I gonna buy a new one or am I gonna fix this one? Especially if part of our fleet transports students. Those are not vehicles that we can play games with.
Right.
Lynn?
I have two. And one is the stabilization fund. Is that a track and turf field stabilization fund or just a turf field?
No, that's the track and turf.
That's the only.
That's the only one that we've got.
So that's just turf field?
No, 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 no. Pat just didn't, she's, to save room, I'm assuming it says it's track.
It's the only stabilization we have, fund we have.
No, I get that, I just, that's just sister field, that's all, I just wanted to make sure.
Note to self, no more shirt forms.
So if we take this money and we use it, do we still have the 500,000 to put back into E and D? That's a solid?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a great question, thank you. I should have said that right at the beginning. You're absolutely right, thanks for bringing that up.
So what do you need from us?
We need a vote on, so that we can move this money, transfer this money and do what we need to do. Do we need to do each individually?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Elise. I was just asking if we need to vote on each one individually?
No.
Or all together? All together.
Elaine? So we have exactly 500,000 for the E and D plus another 128,000 extra? Like, where is this money coming from?
Right, that, no, that's exactly, that was the question Lynn just asked. That's the exact question Lynn just asked. And I want to be cautious too. I mean, these numbers will be absolute, these numbers here will be absolute, that, you know, pretty much absolute, like, you will see the 50,000 move over here, you'll see the 50,000 here move over to OPEB. But the, the E and D, because that's kind of the accumulation of all kinds of stuff. And right now, it's a projection, it's a good projection, but it won't be a solid, you know, 460,000 or 500, it'll be like, I don't know, 489,063 cents, do you know what I mean? So that number will, will, will alter a little bit, but, but these top two won't. The, the one here, though, for the, the facilities truck, I mean, if that, if it's not that number, Pat, do you want to explain, like, let's say it comes in at 20, I don't know, pick a number, 26,000, and you've got 2,000 left over, talk about the residual.
The residual would just go into E and D.
E and D. Okay.
That makes sense. I just thought, I was like, wow, these are awfully round numbers, that can't be the real.
No, that's, yeah.
Can I clarify something? So when you were talking about what was gonna go into ED, you actually went down. You said 468 and some change. Are we definitely gonna have 500,000 coming to ED?
Well, we still have some assessments that haven't come through from the state.
Yeah. We're still in a projection mode, Lynn, at this point in time, you know? So we won't, we really won't know until June 30th, like, after.
I just want to make sure it's a little lower.
It's a plus or minus, right?
Well, that was, that's.
Is that right? It's a plus or minus value. It's 500 plus or minus. I mean, it could, it could be a little bit greater than 500, it could be a little bit minus.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
They can't, they don't know because the state's gotta get back to them with the final, final, final.
And I get that. And so are you, are you confident it's gonna be over 500?
She doesn't know, Lynn, she doesn't know. What does Santa Claus bring in here this Christmas? We don't know exactly.
I don't know, but I don't want to give away all the money if I don't have what we need.
I mean, well, I think what you're, are you asking, do, could it be as low as 400,000?
Right.
Because that's an extreme, right?
Well, I'm looking at it and I'm saying, okay, do we really want to allocate this money now, not knowing what we're gonna be able to put into E and D if E and D is that important?
But we need to make the decision before June 30th.
I'm gonna give you my opinion. I'm frankly, I think this is the responsible thing to do. One, that turf field scares the living daylights out of me, three $400,000 coming like that, and that's gonna kill any other program, and we're gonna cut, 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 cut in order to do it.
63,000 in the.
What?
We have 100, don't we still have 100, 63,000 in the?
I, I don't know.
We put 14,000 in that was tucked away somewhere in some crazy little funky fund.
That was less than what from activities.
Yeah, the turf field fundraiser.
$14,000.
So, so that's all we have. If we put that in, we've got 63,000, 64,000 dollars towards the 300, 400,000 spend. So we need to do that one. OPEB, well, what's our unfunded liability this year? I mean, it's crazy. And we know we need to slowly try to, painlessly do that. I was not for the facilities truck, but I think Steve makes a really good point. And I know Susan, who, you know Susan is not all about that, you know? I think that, I think Mark Jones said it last year, Neil Darcy, one of the two of them, that we really need to be on an annual purchase plan.
I get the truck, it's just, and I get the turf field. And I, I understand that we are ridiculously below what we need to have for OPEB, but I think everybody is.
Yeah, yeah, put a little bit away and it grows and we're in a better place because we're paying as we go. What's our retiree medical right now? Do you know off the top of your head? What's the total amount and the cost of it?
A million something in the budget, I think.
Can you look that up for me? I, I think it's important, no, that's Melanson Heath. Whatever it is, it's a, it's an incredible amount of money. And it's going up, that must be the same rate that our insurance for active employees is going up. So that scares the heck out of me. But anyway, my two cents. What does everybody else think?
No, just, just to get it out there, we don't have a solid 500,000, we've got a plus or minus 500,000 going into ED.
Right. But that's the best estimate based on historical. And so June 30th is when you'll have your final finals, you think? Or did it trickle in afterwards?
It trickles in.
Sometimes we don't get them until July 1st or 2nd, depending on.
Will you, will you, just because I think we have a school committee that's now more aware, will you share with us where those, those numbers came in and what your, whether it's up or down, where you thought it was? I think that will help.
I think we did that last year, too. Yeah, we brought that forward.
That would be helpful for all of us.
I think we did that in like August, I think, one of our first meetings back.
And then, and then, yeah, but I'd like it to come out before, I mean, you can report out on it, but I think we would all like to know what it is because we're all kind of keyed in on it now. Okay, good. Does anybody want to make a motion? Because we're running late, but I'm good to stay for the night. Go ahead, Steve.
I move that we, that we put 50,000 into the turf and track stabilization fund, 50,000 into OPEB, and allocate 28,000 for the purchase of a new van, heavy-duty van.
Facility truck.
Pickup truck.
Yes.
Are we good?
Second.
Thanks, Elise. Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? It's unanimous?
It's not unanimous.
It's not unanimous?
No.
Okay, hold on. All those opposed?
Oh.
No. So the motion passes six to one, but I will, I want you to explain to us what your concerns are. And before you do that, always feel comfortable when the, right before we take the vote, when it, to say what you need to say. Like, feel confident that you have a voice, you can say.
I always feel comfortable to say what I want to say.
Not always, but go ahead, tell us what it is.
Yeah, so, no, it's, for me, it's a matter of principle. We've spoke about the establishment of the stabilization fund and money to put in there. Same with OPEB. And I, I think I brought this up at the last meeting, that the facilities truck was a surprise at the end of the year. I'm not disputing the need for it, but last year, when we spoke about it, because there was another truck we needed to purchase, that we have a list of all the vehicles and what the rotation is, what needs to be. So on principle, I am against the money for the truck because it was not included in a plan.
That's fair.
Can I just speak to that for a moment?
Yeah, please do.
I want to make sure that I put out there that we actually have brought the, the plan before you folks, before.
The capital. With the capital plan for the high school.
With all of the vehicles that.
Yeah, and you can see, the line was drawn through two vehicles.
I don't recall when I, I'm not, I don't recall seeing it, it's my bad. But again, the mention of this thing at the couple of meetings ago, and it's just.
Do we have a schedule, Kathy, so I just have a quick one. Do we have a, a schedule of FY 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and what you're, is that it right there?
That's it right there. Yeah.
Just for trucks?
No, it's part of the larger capital plan.
No, I think that's what we're asking for, is a, a view of the vehicles.
Right. So it's right there.
I, I see.
Oh.
No, that, no. Oh, you mean with the actual vehicles?
Yes.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six.
We have six vehicles that.
We have more than a vehicle. We have nine vehicles that are on the road right now. Do we need all, do we need more? Do we need all of them?
We are replacing, this truck replaces the oldest one in the fleet, which is a 2001.
So, all right, to be, this, yeah. I know what this shows, but it says a replacement based on condition. What I'm asking for is the anticipated replacement. So, yeah, at some point, they're gonna need to be replaced, but what do you anticipate? And why don't we plug a number in to the, and I know you did that and it was pulled out, but I just think that it, it has to be on our radar. And even if you plug a number in pertinent to the vehicle, and Brooke said it's gonna stay there. And, you know, at a previous meeting, I think I, I mentioned my concerns and the concerns of the town I represent. And that's why I voted.
How are you? Okay. I know you have my sense.
Yeah, I know that, yeah. I mean, I have a car, at some point, I'm gonna have to replace it. I have a rough idea when.
So what's the bottom line?
The bottom line is to anticipate an expense that we put in the budget. We had, and we didn't talk about this until a couple of meetings ago, when we were told we had some extra money at the end of the year and we'd like to purchase a facilities truck. And that's, that's right, but I think in terms of planning, it's not.
I think it goes back to the fact that we, exactly what I said at the beginning, it needs to be on the budget line.
Right, I agree.
Right, and we need not to ever take it off. It needs to be non-negotiable.
So you have a list of the fleet, just reply, but what do you anticipate having to replace? And maybe you can't, but just.
It is our perspective. It is, we've talked about, it isn't just the fleet, it's everything. There's an end of life for, an estimated end of life for boilers, there's an end of, you know, for everything.
Right, but.
So we've had this conversation many, many times.
There's a truck, a fleet, end of year recommendations, it's all, it passed.
So is that something that we can?
Lynn's right. We need to, we need to put that on a future agenda. We do need to do that, like the equipment rotation. I don't even know what all of it is. I don't really want to get in the weeds on it, to be honest with you, but I would like to understand what the big picture is and what those areas are.
Boiler issue when you first came in.
Well, a 19-year-old truck is, that's, that's, that's a long, long time on the road, right? And if you figure, if you have to replace a truck at least that often, and there are nine in the fleet, and we're talking.
Nine vehicles.
Nine vehicles, and if they're 28,000 dollars per, that's about 15,000 a year that gets budgeted towards a replacement every two years, you would replace that truck.
Stabilization fund for trucks.
All right, we're moving on, folks. We are moving on. District improvement plan.
Thanks, Kathy. Did we vote? Yes, they voted.
Yes, they voted. They passed.
She's, she's a 6-1.
Yep. We'll get to it. So the district improvement plan, and Tom, by the way, thank you very much for speaking to it tonight. I, I respect that. I also appreciate the fact that, you know, one or two people asked some questions about it from our, our communities, which is so exciting to me, because somebody looked at it from our communities, which is so exciting to me, somebody looked at it and digested it enough to want to ask questions, so I was thrilled with that. This will be the third pass at it tonight, so I mean, this is, I'm not sure how much you want me to go into it, but if I could just give that broad overarching view of the district plan, what a district improvement plan is. I know that you spoke earlier about a strategic plan. I know I've spoken about the fact that we've done two one-years, but the vision is certainly, like as we move forward next year, we're perfectly aligned now to go to a three, at least a three-year plan. I feel very comfortable, I'm sure Todd will be helping us out a lot with that. From my perspective, a district improvement plan needs to be authentic, it needs to be genuine, and it needs to reflect earnestly what's happening in the district. It can't be esoteric, it can't be out there, and it can't come with things that you can't in some way or another check to see that it has been completed, whatever that looks like. When we look at a district improvement plan, it's very different than a school improvement plan. A school improvement plan can kind of come from two lenses. It can look and see how it fits in with this, and I think, Mike, I think you folks at Florence Sawyer spent quite a bit of time focusing to make sure that the school improvement plan is a reflection or an extension of this. So that's one of the things that we look for. The school has the autonomy, though, to do different things if it wants to, or if its school council, in conjunction with its administration and its staff, want to do some different things, that's certainly, that's up to the schools. When we look at a district improvement plan, we look and say, what are the large initiatives that are affecting a larger number of people? The safety component is one of those, for example, you know, where that's affecting district-wide, every building on some level or another. When we take a look at the literacy, that's another plan that's affecting a lot of students across the district. Right now, it has direct impact with our elementary schools, but I know I've said around this table before, we see that broadening and blossoming into the middles, and we're seeing some work at the high school now that's also mirroring some of that. So when we look at the district, we are looking at that larger picture of things that are affecting a larger number of students. Very often, we look at things, you know, in terms of the culture that's there, like when we talk about, I think with goal number two, when we talk about the social-emotional component, part of that's a culture, and I know I handed out a sheet at our workshop about social-emotional, how it can be defined, but I think Chair Remosco had alluded to this earlier, and I know that Todd and I have spoken about it with regards to digital literacy. You spoke about social-emotional, things that just become embedded in how you're doing business, right? And how you offer instruction and how you support curriculum work. So when I take a look at this, and I'm going to really just go through it very quickly, because like I say, I know this is your third time in taking a look at it tonight. You heard Joan, I thought, did a fantastic job tonight in talking a little bit more about co-teaching models, which is a goal number one, and what that looks like, the whole notion of strengthening. District-wide, our intervention processes, that has taken a huge amount of our effort, a huge amount of work from your offices and our staff that are linked to that. I feel very good about the work that's being done in this area, but we want to, we want to expand it. It's working so well, we want to expand it. Number two is where we're taking a look at the safety component of our work, and that's where the social-emotional component comes in, but that also is where our planning and the drills and all that other kind of stuff come into play. So that's where that is. The third is the curriculum and instruction, and this is where, for example, the digital literacy piece comes into play. It's not the only thing, but it's certainly one of the things that we're looking at putting a focus on. Again, I know that I've mentioned this to you before, and I did a little bit broader at the workshop that we had the other night, how I see digital literacy working, again, with Todd and Martina, and bringing some of the ITS people in from the buildings and the work that I can see them doing, the development of a digital literacy plan, which Todd will take a look at as well. So we can have something, and we've got that December 19th date is a timeline for us, which we've also mentioned before. We've got other work in curriculum that we're doing as well. Again, curriculum kind of goes right across our district, and that's really where the digital, or the district improvement plan should be looking. We've got a lot of different PD on tap for next year. I know that we've had that discussion as well, that's a strength that Todd brings to us, but we've got work already lined up for our district for next year, and I mentioned already about George Kearl's coming on at our March 8th PD day. So I think we've got a good handle on our PD moving forward, but I think that Todd will help to strengthen that infrastructure. And then finally, of course, the literacy component. We've had consultants in here for the last, this will be year four of five. We feel very strongly that that work is progressing really, really well. For example, too, I was talking with Principal O'Shea today about their, the first blush at some of the raw data for our NCAS this year, looking very strong there, and he really credits a lot of it to the literacy plan that we've got in place. So everything that we're saying on here is what we're doing. It's the real thing. But keep in mind that it is a district-wide, it's not, it's not a catch-all, it's not something you just add on this or this. It's very thoughtfully designed. I thought, Elaine, you did a really nice job in a response that I saw back, I thought that you just articulated it beautifully, how it's all pulled together. That was, I couldn't have done a better job in that, really, I couldn't have. And then, I think I said in my email, there's something I could have added to it. So, you know, you've got department chairs, administrators, staff, you've got a lot of bodies involved in this. So I feel very comfortable in moving this forward. I don't know if you've got any remaining questions, or if there's anything left that I haven't spoken to, and I'm happy to do that tonight. Mike?
I'm just looking at past drafts, and there's some changes on the current, I don't know if it's from the very last draft, but from the one that I had, I think from last month, our first meeting, my first...
There could be, there could be some, yeah. What exactly were you looking at?
Goal number two, looks like the second bullet is a new one.
Right. And this is because we, yes, I think I had alluded to this the other night and said that we did add this.
Right, okay.
Because we realized that we had, this goes back to the nurses, again, there's your district-wide piece, right? And we realized that we did not have as a school district of what we feel we're comfortable for appropriate protocols that are in place. Not knowledge, but protocols and processes. And this is something I feel is critical that we need to put into place, so that's why it became a goal. So thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate that.
And then, just one more thing, there was a change on another goal. Goal number four, the fourth bullet down, below Teaching and Learning for Grade 6 through 12. So that was, the older version was incorporating a consistent ELA instructional practice district-wide, and now it's been slightly modified. Is that just a clarification of how we're going to measure?
Yes, that's all it is.
Okay.
Thank you for picking that up. I'm impressed. Thank you for looking so closely. Thank you for looking so closely, and I really, really respect that, thank you.
Okay. Lynn, yes?
I'm just wondering, so would parents read these? Will they notice anything, or they, will they be looking more towards the plans for the individual schools? Will they'll notice what their child is doing?
Well, so you asked that question before, you've asked that question before, I can't remember whether it was in this audience or not. So a couple of quick things. Safety's the obvious, right? I mean, that's going to be the obvious one, that a parent should say by the end of September next year, I've seen my students practice these, I've seen the teachers practice these, I see that there's a plan in place, I see new manuals, I alluded, had alluded to that earlier, do new crisis manuals that'll be published, you know, so people should see absolute measurable things. When you're looking at the literacy plan, you know, that's a little bit different. Like, there's different ways that you kind of can see whether this has happened or not. I don't know that a parent would notice that their child has become just that much stronger in that area, like, I don't know whether that's something that they'll see or not. We look at it from, again, from a district lens, because this is a district improvement plan, we look at it because we're constantly monitoring our data points, right? And so we're constantly looking, and keep in mind, like, and I'm sure that you already know this, but NCAS is designed in a way that every question measures something very specific, right? These are not random questions, like, every question is absolutely targeted. So when we get those NCAS results, we go back, just so you know, we go back and analyze, and you'll be involved in this heavily next year, we analyze every component of that. And so when we take a look back, that's where the schools, sometimes the schools will embrace a component that will help, because they see a hole in their NCAS, and they can tell exactly what that hole is based on the data. So we're constantly looking at data points, but parents wouldn't necessarily look at that, but that, we see that as our job. So I'm not sure if that kind of helps or not. I mean, the nurses are going to notice the protocols, a parent wouldn't notice that, but if a parent went from a school to a school, let's say moved from Stowe to Lancaster, they'd say, oh my goodness, they'd do the exact same thing. And that's one of the things that we're looking for, even, I'm going to go back to the safety, with the work that we're doing with our police, the fact that every one of our police officers now can get into every one of our buildings. Every one of our, that wouldn't be something parents would notice, but we know, every one of those doors is now marked, there's a label on every single door, and it's all very strategic, right? How every door is labeled across our district. We just finished labeling Stowe, so almost maybe two months ago, a month ago, but that was all part of a project, but it wouldn't be something that a parent would see, but I'll tell you what, if there was an emergency and we said it's on D and it's this, everybody knows exactly where that's going to be. Do you know any means, so?
Anything? Anything? Okay. So you're looking for...
Motion to accept the district improvement plan for this year.
I move that we accept the district improvement plan for school year 2018, 2019.
Second?
Second.
Elise, it's a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Concerns?
When do we start with concern?
No.
No, no.
When we come back from summer, although some of us are going to be meeting through the summer, we are going to start. We're going to be talking to Todd as well.
Going to be messy.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you very much for your work. We are moving into Subcommittee Report. Steve is our newly-elected Subcommittee Chair for Budget and Warrant. I think we had a great meeting.
It was a great meeting.
Yeah, I was elected by a vote of two to one.
He was. He was a lot of success.
I voted against it. No, we had our first organizational meeting on Monday evening. We have basically proposed that we meet at 5:00 on the Monday preceding a school board meeting, at least until we get into the budget crunch time of year, and then we'll review and see what else we're going to be doing. The minutes for the meeting have been drafted, and I have received a copy of them. Do we have to wait until next August to approve them, or can the three hours...
No, you can talk about what happened at the meeting.
Okay.
But you don't, you don't want, yeah, we don't want to read the minutes because they're not real minutes yet.
I know. Okay. We looked at the budget transfer request for this year, we, and we recommended that we were in favor of it. We, Elise was elected secretary. She does such a great job.
We talked about when we were going to look at K and pre-K.
I'm sorry.
Right?
Yes. And we looked at that, and we're going to get to that in October, the pre-K fees for next year for fiscal year '20, we'll be doing that at that time. And hopefully that that will help resolve some of the concerns of the parents over that period of time. We...
Talking about pickup truck.
We voted in favor of the pickup truck, that is correct. That really was, we looked at, we made the suggestion for Pat to produce the three-year trending E and D, and now we've got a new item for our next meeting, which will be to try to come up with some kind of an idea of where we would be comfortable with that E and D to be in the future. That's it.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Personnel, Kathy?
Okay, we had the first meeting of the new committee on the 11th. I was elected chair.
Lucky you.
Nobody else wanted to do it. And we're going to share responsibility for doing the minutes, so we'll rotate through that. Our agenda item was to talk to Brooke about her goals, her annual plan and other goals for next year. The annual plan, Superintendent's annual plan, the goal, most of the goals are fine, the one goal in need of more development is the recommendation. So we will be taking that up at our first meeting in September.
And might I add, that's just because the principals are still, we're still pulling together the communication plan. And so it would be linked to that.
But the, her other goals are good to go, and I assume she'll be working on them over the summer, but they will come forward to the school committee, I think, at the second meeting in September.
Can you put that on the agenda? Oh, there you go. Thank you.
We're good.
Awesome.
And then I've got, Susan's not here, I have the CPAC.
Policy?
No, Susan's not.
No, Susan's asked someone to do it for her. Who did she ask? Why?
I didn't print out the email.
Okay. So Sue has voted chair?
Poor Susan.
She took it great. She handled it very well. In the, in my class, but she said, we reviewed policies that had not been with Dorothy Parker yet, and we reviewed them with the admin, and hopefully we'll be meeting with Budget and Warrants soon to review the help, the policies and protocol.
So Susan and Steve can...
And the minutes are done, while they're drafted.
Perfect. So it sounds like everybody's keeping their minutes up to date. Awesome, thank you. All right, Kathy, I'm sorry, go ahead, CPAC.
Okay, so I, Lynn and I are the new reps to the CPAC. I was able to attend the meeting on Monday, the 18th, and this summary encompasses the last two meetings, because we didn't get a report the last time. So with regard to workshops, the final workshop of the year was held on June 6th. This covered reading assessments within the district, and when interventions such as Wilson and Horton-Gillingham were utilized, was delivered by two district reading and literacy specialists, and it was well-attended and provided valuable insight into the current state of the reading curriculum in our district. With regard to fundraising, CPAC participated in Children's Day in Bolton and Spring Fest in Stowe, increasing community outreach and fundraising with the hopes of assisting in the print cost of CPAC materials to be disseminated in future IEP meetings to families. The CPAC will be partnering with Not Your Average Jones in Acton for the month of September as part of their cause program. For the entire month, the CPAC will receive 15% of all purchases made by its supporters just by mentioning the Nishoba CPAC. There will be weekly incentives in the form of gift certificates, and I think it's only right we support the CPAC by having one of our meetings there, so that, or just one.
Do they have, do they have meeting rooms?
You don't need a meeting room, you just need a big table.
No.
They don't? Because I'm thinking about our strategy session.
No, but anyway.
I'm sorry, did you say that was the month of August?
No, no, September, for the month of September. And then, planning for the upcoming school year, a public meeting was held to determine the preferred workshop offerings and method of delivery for those offerings for the upcoming school year. A list of top preferred offerings was created, and it will be vetted against budget, fundraising efforts, and cost sharing amongst area CPACs in an attempt to get the best speakers to deliver the most desired offerings. And then a public meeting was held to stop the formation of support groups with the goal of giving parents an avenue to voice and share concerns by establishing a group or groups that meet separately from the CPAC. They were volunteers to initiate support group for various reasons, by diagnosis, for small coffee talk meetings, and to form needs assessments. The information bundled up from these groups to better identify the greatest areas of need in the district. Information on issues, concerns, and needs of parents, staff, and administrators involved with special education can help the CPAC and district work together for the benefits of students and families.
Nice.
And I didn't write that, just so you know.
Who did?
Kim did, and thank you.
Sorry, Kathy.
That's okay.
I'm like listening to you read it, and I was like, bullet points next to that.
No, that's okay, but I didn't want to take credit for your fine work.
Kim Carnes, co-chair of CPAC, I'm not supposed to do this either, but you're here, and so welcome. So the only thing, I know Elise and I attended a meeting a few weeks ago.
Yes, that was the 31st of May, and that update I did give.
Oh, okay.
But one of the different...
You did correct it.
No, 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 this was stuff that I had not, because I was sick one meeting.
Right, right.
You're good.
But my, the reason I bring it up is because one of the, one of the things that I've been hoping you can work on with the CPAC co-chairs and Superintendent Clancy is ensuring that the newsletters for the schools include a CPAC page in them, just to... We're talking about...
I've already spoken to the superintendent about it.
Perfect.
And it did come up at the meeting, so...
Awesome. All right, perfect. Thank you, thank you for, that's a great review, overview.
Kim didn't write it, so I didn't say.
We need more of those. Okay, moving on. We do not have any other reports. Is there any correspondence, anything that we need to know about? Communications advisory, when we get together, this is going to be chock-full of correspondence piece. Okay. Consent agenda, assume that the meeting minutes of June 6, 2018, and the warrants of June 22, 2018 are approved. Thank you all for not shuttling that around the table while people are talking. Thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it. Items for next agenda, you'll find out.
I have a question, though. You wanted to, us to look at the planning calendar for next year. Do you want, I had a couple of things, you want me to just email them to you?
Yep. Can you CC Alita, too?
Of course I can.
Thank you. All right, and anything else?